Hey. Good evening, everyone. 7:35 Wednesday Business Meeting. Do the pledge and start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's announcements. Bob, announcements? Deputy Mayor? Dana? Oh, announcement-free day. What? I know. Well, we're getting near the holidays. I thought maybe there was some fun stuff. So I'm sure there's lots going on. I hope everybody shops local and visits and eats a lot and drinks a lot and has a good time in all of our places from Chilmark to Arcadian to downtown to the waterfront. And we will get the meeting started. Anybody getting the meeting started?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
Good evening, everyone. So first, we have a presentation from the Police Reform Advisory Committee. And I'd like to introduce the Chair, Reverend Mary Pfeiffer.
Hello, Reverend. Happy holidays. If you're more comfortable sitting, as long as you have the microphone so folks on Zoom can hear you. If you're okay standing, that's cool, too.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. So tonight's presentation is going to be a two-year summary of our mission to promote transparency, trust, and collaboration between the OPD Austin Police Department for those and the community. Next slide. I will be reviewing PrAC's purpose and responsibilities, highlighting our last two years, as well as reviewing feedback received over the two years. Next slide. The Police Reform Advisory Committee, PrAC, was created to advise the Village Board of Trustees on implementing essential reforms within the Austin Police Department. Our objectives include reviewing and analyzing current policies, identifying areas for improvement, recommending reforms to enhance transparency and accountability, and soliciting public feedback. Our responsibilities encompass conducting policy reviews, organizing community engagement sessions, collaborating with OPD to understand operational issues, and researching best policies in policing and developing actionable recommendations for policy changes and improvements. Next slide. So in 2024, we had the Police Reform and Reinvention Committee link updated to reflect the current PrAC. And we also had a public work session in September where 14 attended. Topics discussed were police accountability and transparency, rules of conduct between officers and residents, and revisiting previous reform recommendations. In addition, we recommended the National Night Out Initiative, which is an annual community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie every year in August. Some police departments do it different months, but ours does it in August. We had a great turnout last year, and this was our second year. We had an even better turnout. It was great. Next slide. Additionally, the committee collaborated with OPD on recruitment strategies to encourage local residents to take the civil service exam, promoting diversity within the force. We also advocated for online posting of quarterly policing statistics, which helps those who want to track trends and outcomes. Lastly, in 2024, we had three community meetings, and they were hosted across Austin strategically in sectors of where different people would live in Austin to ensure broad resident participation and to foster dialogue between residents, village officials, and OPD. Next slide. In 2025, we continued our efforts through education and engagement. We had a qualified immunity panel in March, and 44 were in attendance, educating residents on the concepts and related state legislation. Then we had two more community meetings in May and in October. That attendance was 34 between both of them. The topics discussed were traffic stops, officer wellness, and mental health. The standards of the OPD exceeds state standards in their professional development. De-escalation training was a concern, but we learned that it was continuous throughout the career of the officer, and ICE policies were reviewed. Next slide. PrAC also recommended an officer disciplinary matrix to support transparency and accountability within the department. The OPD Chief Zimmerman accepted our recommendation, and they're looking to have a third-party vendor create and implement that matrix. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. And we, can you go back to the other slide? Thank you. And we are, this one, yes. And we have our community policing survey out, looking for voluntary feedback from the residents of Austin. Okay, now, next slide. So our feedback from the residents within our meetings and just over the two years in general, they want to get to know their officers, their patrol officers for the areas in which they've lived. We also learned in our community meetings that traumatic events in law enforcement is the number one topic discussed there. So the average person experiences two traumatic experiences in their lives, but the average officer experiences 280 in their careers, with suicide being the number-two killer of cops. So within the community meetings, one of the topics that kept coming up was officer wellness, officer mental health, that should be included in regular training. Also implicit bias training as a regular training within the training that they already have. But overall, that OPD does a good job. Next slide. The feedback from the officers within the meetings themselves, they said they want to get to know their community. And the officer accountability is in place with their body cams, their video is regularly reviewed. Within the discussion, they also wanted us to know that they were real people, too. And they asked the community to support their events. So one of the things that stuck out that they said was that community meetings that we had were an extension of their training and that they wanted to hear from the community. Next slide. So over the past two years, PrAC has demonstrated its role as a bridge-building and trust-sustaining body for the Village of Austin. In collaboration with Chief Zimmerman and the Austin Police Department, PrAC has expanded opportunities for public dialogue, helped strengthen accountability measures, and emphasized shared responsibility for community safety. So public safety is not something done to the community but with the community, and that's from the 21st Century Policing Principles. That was one of our guiding principles in our efforts.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
So, thank you, Reverend, and you're the Chair. So thank you for your service. I understand that you might, that you're terming out or that you have decided that you might move on to other initiatives. We have 13 committees, just as an FYI, no pressure. I know you're so involved in the community, and we appreciate all the time that you spend. So I want to take, we have to do that. I know that the liaison, Deputy Mayor probably wants to add a few words, but before he does that, thank you very much for everything. Just to point clarity, the President's, the last piece, this is which President?
Obama.
Right. So I want to be clear that it's not the current President, but it's actually President Obama, and that you followed that, which is, you know, fine, and I think our Chief of Police also does.
Yeah.
But I just wanted people to understand that this, we've been doing this for a while, right?
Yeah.
This is a committee that's been around for a few years, and I know Deputy Mayor's going to talk about that, but I appreciate, you know, the consistency. This is not like a committee du jour. Like, it's not like it just started six months ago. The surveys are the ones that just went out a month in November.
Yes.
So one of three went out.
Yeah.
And you've already gotten some feedback, it looks like.
Yeah.
Along with feedback that you've been collecting, et cetera, for two years. So that was really clarifying for me. So I appreciate that in the context, and that there's a couple more that will go out there.
Yeah.
My takeaway is, though, with the surveys, et cetera, that there's been a consistent sort of feeling. I'm sure it's not all exactly lined up and synchronized, but there's been some consistency, which I think speaks volumes in a very positive way for the committee, because there seems to be, you know, some consistency in the committee and where it is today. So I appreciate all the help. You want to kick us off with as the liaison to this?
First, I just want to say thank you to our Chair, Reverend Pfeiffer. A round of applause. I want to open it up. If there were any questions, we're gonna bisect this conversation into the past and the future. And so I want to start with this presentation on the past, the work that PrAC has done to open it up for any questions that my colleagues may have here, or I don't know, Pat has joined us yet. Has he joined us yet?
I don't see his name. He's there 15 minutes.
All right, we're thinking of you, Pat.
Yeah.
If you have any questions for either one of us about the work that the committee has done, and then we'll shift to the recommendation moving forward.
Dana?
Okay. Any questions?
I attended
I think at least two of the community meetings, one at Starr.
Yeah.
And then one at the library.
Yeah.
And I found them both really great, very different, both of them. But to me, they were really important meetings. And I mean, anytime, it is always easy for either side to hear what the other one's necessarily saying all the time. But, you know, I thought they were undertaken with, you know, a real effort to be productive and listening and, you know, and I don't think you can have too much of that, you know. So, you know, anything you know, to continue that in some way or another, I think, would be, would be good.
Thank you. Trustee Yost, you have joined us. Any questions? You may not have seen the presentation, but any questions about the work that PrAC has done already?
Good evening. Thanks. Sorry I was running late.
Hi.
No, no, no work. I didn't see the, I didn't see the presentation, but I've followed the PrAC closely over the last couple of years, even when I wasn't a trustee, and I appreciate the work that has been done. And, you know, so no, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. You may have a seat and enjoy the rest of the conversation. So I'll start by laying a little bit of the foundation for our conversation, and then I will tee us up for what we need to discuss. So this work really has started, it started a long time ago, but I think it's helpful to start that timeline in 2020. You had the murder of George Floyd, and that kicked off all sorts of events and reform efforts across many industries, including and in particular policing throughout the country. And in the state of New York, then-Governor Andrew Cuomo said through Executive Order 203 that he wanted every municipality that had a police department to create a report that talked about how it would reinvent and reform its police department to be up to date and aligned with its community needs. And so, in an effort to conduct that work, we brought along some outside consultants that helped to facilitate that work, and that ultimately produced a report that we sent to the state. Now, the body that made up that committee was made up of police officers and community members from across our community, and they were really energized by this work. So I don't know the exact number. I'm going to guess something around 98, 99% of other municipalities across the state. Once they handed in their report, they were done. They said, that's it. That we're not mandated to do anything else. We're not going to do anything else. A very small number in Austin is in that group, decided, we want to continue this work. And so in 2021 and '22, so in 2021 is when you had kind of the implementation committee that said, let's, let's kind of continue this work. And that implementation committee said, it would be helpful for us to now kind of move away or kind of build upon this work, because what happened was every quarter or so, the Chief of Police, then Kevin Sylvester, would present in coordination with me and the committee, kind of what's been going on, and going down the list of all of the different recommendations from that particular committee. That was 2021. We decided then, as a group, hey, let's move this work forward in a committee, the Police Reform Advisory Committee. And it was really formulated to build upon those recommendations. It wasn't limited to those until we can expand beyond those. But the idea was, there's going to be an amount of work that it wants to accomplish, and it's going to have a couple of years to do it. So 2022 and '23. That was chaired by Jackie Shaw, very ably, and that work was successful in advancing a number of police reform measures. There was a conversation that we had when that was done to say, after those two years, do we want to continue this work? The committee said, hey, we still have work that we would like to do. The board said, okay, so you can continue doing that work. We are certainly open to all of your recommendations. And that opened the next round of PrAC '23 and '24, which is where we are today, chaired by Reverend Pfeiffer. And so now, instead of kind of continuing what we have done, saying, hey, let's extend another two years in order to kind of continue this reform work. As we reflected on the work that PrAC has done, one of the places where there was the most energy was around the community engagement pieces, whether they were the sessions that Trustee White mentioned that she attended, whether they be, we had a panel on police topic where, in this case, it was qualified immunity, where folks could learn. We had someone that was in favor of qualified immunity, keeping it, of getting rid of it, and kind of as an education piece. Whether it was building upon the efforts that the police were having to connect with the community through its own efforts, that's where there was a lot of energy. And so while there wasn't a unanimous decision made on the committee about how to advance, there are a range of opinions. There are certainly some folks that feel like the reform work should continue in its current form. The majority of folks felt like this is the right move to have the focus be on police relations, a name coined by committee member Lieutenant Patrick McGovern, keeping the PrAC acronym, but instead of Police Reform Advisory Committee, Police Relations Advisory Committee. And so having the police-community relationship be the focus and say, how can we now, moving forward, have, instead of every couple of years with a set amount of work, a standing body whose responsibility it is to have members of the police department and the community come together to talk about what are events, what are activities that are going to help to foster and build that relationship? I think the two things that I would name that makes this different from what is already being done, number one, we have the Civilian Police Complaint Review Board, which is really focused on, in a very specific and prescriptive way, reviewing complaints against the police from the community and making determinations about the veracity of those complaints. The scope is very, very specific about what that committee does. Then there are the efforts of the police department themselves, and they certainly do the block parties and the coffee with a cop and lots of opportunities to connect with the police department. And there is still space for the kind of activities that this committee has been championing and would like to continue to organize. It's particularly helpful when you have members of the faith community and members of nonprofits and members of the community that are activated and care about this issue that are not responding to a big incident that happened. This is not reactive or reflexive. It's really proactive and meant to, as relationships are supposed to be, done over time in a really authentic way. We have had, over the course of the last couple of years, a new Chief of Police. We've had a ton of new officers. And so there's a lot of room to build those relationships. And the committee's recommendation and my recommendation to the board is to consider this shift in focus to a police relations advisory committee, to having it be a standing committee. And there are governance pieces to discuss as well, how many people should be on the committee, which the makeup be, et cetera, et cetera. Those are a little bit down the road. First, would love to get your thoughts about the idea in general.
Bob, I'm going to start with you.
I mean, I read through everything, and I believe you're on the right track, Deputy Mayor. And I agree with where you're going with this. So I'm in favor of the little name change and keeping the thing moving.
Okay. Dana, you already said that you're in favor. Do you have anything else to add? Well, only that, like I said, I don't think you can have such a thing as too much conversation when it comes to this particular relationship. So I think the community has shown that they're willing to have those discussions, and our wonderful police force has shown that they're willing to have them. So why not do it? Right. Okay, so my two cents worth is, and we've spoken, you know, individually. I think oftentimes we'll come to these meetings and go, seriously, that's it, five minutes? You only want five minutes, because more than that is a problem area. So I'm in favor of this. I am, so I didn't know you were part of the naming of this acronym. I'll have to use you in our marketing department. So I want to be very clear that I love the fact that some committees, not all, really sort of have an evolutionary pattern to them, and this is one of those, that we went from 1.0, which was down like top-down, we then moved horizontally to get things done in 2.0, and now it's into 3.0, that brings the police, of which, I don't have the exact numbers, but I do believe that in the time this committee has been in place, about 60% of our police department is new. So the people now are not the same people that were in the original surveys. They're not the same people that were here when we were, you know, teenagers. They're not, it's a different group of human beings. And I noticed "human" showed up a number of times by the committee and by the officers of being seen as, you know, human. And, you know, it's a tough gig right now in 2025, 2026, to be in the emergency field and in the safety field. I also want to mention, for me personally as mayor, one of the greatest accomplishments of this committee, and there are many, but I didn't see up there, so I want to make sure it gets memorialized, is the Mental Health Crisis Unit, which came out of 1.0. We were one of the first ones, and we house in our police department a Mental Health Crisis Unit. Thank you. That's not applause for me, just for the record. So also the committee. And that was because we went forward. We didn't just do the minimum. We, and you were very kind, because I think that many communities, many communities didn't participate. They basically said to the government, governor, we're not doing it. Have a nice day. Those that did, Westchester, I think, had a big number, you know, they did their task. They were done. They moved on. We continued. And I think that speaks a lot for this entire community. And the committee, the officers, the boards, you know, some of the folks have changed. In the time that this committee has been around, that has been huge, and it cannot be overstated about that, and that hopefully the county will continue to fund it, because we're a hub of a regional environment. And believe me, during COVID, man, that was, that's a big deal. It's a big deal now, too. So I don't want to pass without mentioning that. The community pieces, I went, at least one of them, learned a lot. Sometimes you learn and you say, yeah, I now see it. I didn't think I was going to see it that way, and now I do. So I appreciate the education part. Love the concept. I'm a yes on this. I will also mention in the past, just to also be very clear to everyone that listens to this and has their opinions, it was always a unanimous vote, actually, on this board, and even the previous board where there's different people involved. Pat, did you want to add anything to PrAC? I know you spoke already, so I just want to give you on this piece of the 3.0 version, which we will now make it a standing committee, not something the board has to vote on every two years, because it is sunsetting at the end of this year, which is why we are discussing it tonight. Do you have any other commentary beyond?
No, I'll just kind of echo what's been said. I do believe that there's absolutely a place for the continuation of this board, not just from a relationship-building and maintenance standpoint, but, you know, in the, you know, in the unfortunate instance that there might need to be some other kind of discussion around, you know, reform or if something else comes up in the future, I think it's good to have something in place, right?
Okay.
That can be, that can be pivoted to relatively quickly without needing to start up a new, a whole new group, so.
So thank you, everyone. Thank you, Reverend, for your service. Thank you for committee members who are here or are listening in and the work, because all volunteers and everybody, and I know our attorney has sat in on some of the meetings, many of our meetings, all of them, most, and also to the police officers who have been involved. I hope that goes back to them. Stuart, next step in this, because it's sunsetting. There is, and it was mentioned, the number of people on the committee have to be decided by this board. Chairs have to be decided and appointed. Other committees have attendance requirements. We have to go through that. The committee doesn't need to do that. The board will have to do that, because this is a committee, like all committees, that report to the board. So we'll have to sort of get that done. But where does that leave us right now in a very practical matter of moving forward on this, so it doesn't automatically sunset?
You can have a resolution for next week, where the, it would transition from Police Reform Advisory Committee to, what is it, Police Relations?
Yeah.
Advisory Committee? That's fine. Members can stay who they are and would continue. You can make it a two-year term, but you're not sunsetting the committee. You're just giving the folks a new-year term. And now, some of your earlier membership requirements you may want to change. You may recall you had, for example, an NAACP required member, things like that. But we can, I guess the easy way to say it is, you can do a down-and-dirty resolution for December 17th, which effectively allows it to continue. And then early in the next year, the more specific parts of it can be dealt with, particularly if you have members who are currently on PRAC, who do not wish to continue, because then you can put a call out for other members and things like that. So we can, we can certainly have something on for next week to transition it and then essentially make it, in effect, a standing committee of the board.
Great. Thank you. And we'll, and the board can figure out how all the rest of the stuff gets done. Are there any other questions from the staff or anybody? How many committee members are here? I see Kemi's here. And we have three in person. I don't know. I was trying to figure out if we have anybody.
No one that's a panelist, but there may be folks that are watching that are not paneling.
I'm going to see in a minute. Jennifer Cabrera's on. And the rest of our numbers are unrecognizable sort of thing, so I have no idea. We thank all of you, and we will have to get back to you next week is the actual vote. So if any of you have comments, whatever, you know, just let us So if any of you have comments, whatever, you know, just let us know. You don't have to show up again. You look like you want to say something. Did you want to say something? I mean, you look like you're jumping at the bits. You have to come, like, I feel like you look like you want to say something.
Sweet, but I want to thank you guys. And I want to thank Omar and I remember Pfeiffer and the other community members. But I definitely have to give a shout out to you because you have been so amazing. You have been so amazing. And I'm just happy that the police department and our committee has formed a great relationship, right, with the new chief and all the police officers. And I just want to thank you.
Great, thank you, Kemi.
All right, look at that, look at that. We're healing the world, aren't we? We're doing it.
The world is falling apart, but ultimately it's not. Jennifer, since, you know, we don't usually do this at work sessions, but this is the committee that reports to the board. So it's really our purview. So I don't know if you want us, I see her on here because I see the names. Okay. I can't tell. Or she can raise her hand, right? No. Jamie, are you, I'm assuming Jamie's hearing me.
I am, I'm pushing her over. Hold on just a moment, please.
Okay. I wasn't talking to myself, actually, I'm talking to Jamie.
I knew that.
He knows.
And Jennifer is here. If you can turn your camera off, that would be great, if you don't mind. Thank you.
As you know, hi, Jennifer, happy holidays. As you know, we don't usually do this, but it is a committee of the board. It is the end of the year. We're, yeah, we don't want to bring everybody back when we're voting and doing this next week. Everybody has a life and family and all that. I don't want to bring everybody back. You already heard where the board stands on it and they'll continue. So if you would like to add anything, that would be great. And you need to unmute yourself.
Hello, um, thank you. I'm really happy to hear how much support there is for PrAC on the Board of Trustees. I would really just say, you know, I think most of us want to continue doing the type of work that we have been doing, this kind of mix of being really engaged with the police department, you know, suggesting things like that disciplinary matrix, which is now actually happening, and also building up that community engagement work. Like, that's been something that's just really, it feels to me like it's been transformative. Hopefully, it feels that way to the community as well. And I do also want to echo what Kemi said about, Pat has just, he's been such a great resource to us and also just a delight to work with. So I have really enjoyed working with him and I hope that he can continue on the board if the board continues as well.
I thought they were just complimenting you. They're voting for you. See, I didn't get it on the first round. I got it on the second round. Took me a little bit. You're getting the votes. I wish I were getting those kind of votes. I never get that. That's fantastic. Thank you, Jennifer. And if I don't speak before the holidays, a happy holiday to you and your family.
Yeah, you too, all of you.
Thank you. So thank you, everybody. And I think we're ready next week. We will have the resolution. I don't think we need anybody to take more time, and I think we're good. Next. You all are welcome to stay. It's, our meetings are really engaging and interesting, but most people leave after their agenda items are done. Who's doing that? Okay, I thought you were here for both things. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Next, the next three topics, Valerie Manostra are planning consultants here via Zoom. And the next three topics are really things that she's been working on very closely with all of us, but Maddie and Stuart in particular. Cannabis zoning is the next topic. As you know, we had, we've been discussing this for some time. Valerie is going to provide us with an update of where we are with that. Also, we'll get an update on affordable housing set aside policy update and a payment in lieu of parking update as well. So, and this is, would be specific to a property at 217 Main Street and 171 Croton Avenue for the payment in lieu of. So with that, I'd like to bring Valerie over, or she's here.
Hi.
Have her start. She's already here. Introduce her via Zoom.
Yes, hi, Valerie Manostra. So I wanted to kind of, I think this board has seen a couple iterations of the proposed cannabis regulations. The major changes since last time before this board, we had, there was a couple decisions that were, I guess, rendered in the state dealing with how many zoning districts can be limited in terms of retail dispensary versus what is permitted in terms of retail within those zoning districts. So let me just explain to you. So in a couple cases where communities might have limited the retail cannabis down to like, let's just say, a couple zoning districts, but yet retail was allowed in multiple zoning districts. The state found that that was being a little bit too restrictive in terms of retail for the dispensaries. So what we did is we took a look at the zoning districts again that were proposing to allow for retail cannabis in. And then also we looked at it in comparison to where retail is allowed. And currently, retail is allowed in 12 different zoning districts. And we're proposing to allow for cannabis retail in 10 of 10 zoning districts. So the couple, the changes from where retail is allowed versus where we're proposing for retail cannabis is the V C district. I think we talked about that. We are proposing, that's the Village Center. We're proposing not to have cannabis retail within that zoning district. Another one is the Conservation Development District. This is pretty much a residential district. In your zoning, retail is allowed as a conditional use because some of the uses in the, in the Conservation Development District allow for like some hotels or lodging. And so those conditional uses for retail would be associated with that. Apparently, in your Conservation Development District, you actually have residential. So we're recommending that not to be, not to have retail dispensary within that zoning district. And the other one is the Planned Waterfront Sea, which is around 34 State Street and along State Street and Hunter Street. We're proposing not to have retail cannabis dispensary in that zoning district as well. But in general, where the other cannabis retail dispensaries have already been approved, which is along Route 9, also along, down in the, in, down by the train station. And then we would also allow for cannabis dispensary along Croton Avenue. Those zoning districts, we are recommending to move forward with. So that was one of the items that was still outstanding. And then the other one that the board had questions on dealt with the parking requirements. We were suggesting one space for 350 square feet, a gross floor area. And the board had raised, had some questions as to whether other zoning districts, or excuse me, other communities, how they were dealing with the parking requirements for cannabis. And Taryn Ramey, who's the, who's another one of your attorneys associated with the planning board, she did a little bit of research and found that one space for 350 square feet, a gross floor area, is adequate and is similar to other municipalities. So those were the two remaining items that I had noted from last time.
What was, I didn't hear the square footage.
One space per 350 square feet.
One space per 350 square feet?
Yes, a gross floor area. That's correct.
What does that look like on Croton Avenue? Like, if I opened a place up, where would I open a place up on Croton Avenue? Anywhere on Croton Avenue?
So anywhere right now, it would be in the NC1 or NC2 districts. So that could, that would be probably like around, you know, you could have somewhere around like the library and onward up towards Pleasantville Road. So any one of those shopping or those mixed-use buildings could have potentially retail dispensaries.
And do they need their own parking?
So as part of this, it would be, as with any other property, they could, that would be a part of the parking requirements. They could petition, you know, depending upon the zoning district, you know, for payment in lieu of parking, but they would be required to have parking on site.
So is that a yes, they need to have their own parking?
That's correct, yes.
Versus on-street parking is part of their parking, right?
That's correct.
Well, they would need to have it, or if they're in a district that allows them to pay for it, they would need to pay for it. So if for whatever reason.
We'd have to approve whether they can get out by paying, is that?
That's correct. That would come to.
That's correct.
Automatic, that would have to come to the board.
If they went before the planning board and they said, I'd like to put in this use and I have 1,000 square feet, so I'm required to do three parking spots. I have no place to put parking. They could, if they were in a zoning district that allowed a pileup, come to this board, same as two folks are doing tonight, to make that request. And then this board would be able to say yea or nay to that.
Okay, I'm just concerned, anything so close to a library really doesn't sit well with me at all. I know there's also up the street, you know, a lot of after-school programs and a building also has a religious entity in the Westchester Valley, which is an after-school children's program. It's not like we don't have bars there because we do. There's just something, you said, yeah, right? It just, Dana, you said.
Well, so keep in mind, there are.
Weird, right? Yeah, it feels really uncomfortable.
So keep in mind, there are restrictions for how close cannabis dispensary can be towards a school or, you know, or a designated area, place of use. So some of those, and also from religious buildings. So there would be limitations put into place because of the locations or current locations of some of those uses.
You told us last time that libraries are not.
Libraries, that's correct. Libraries would not be, but some of the religious uses, yes. And any school, yes.
There isn't a school there, and the religious part, I don't think, meets that requirement. After-school programs in a religious place, I thought you said last time, doesn't qualify.
So.
But being, but being a religious place does.
Considered a church, that building?
Yes, we've had, we have that with a number of the people who are presenting tonight for the cabaret, that in fact, their location is something that the S L A does look at. So the answer is, and the same, this would be with the Office of Cannabis Management. It's the same sort of theory.
Okay. Well, the smoke shops are a whole different thing. That's not a thing to do with us, actually. It's a business, but it doesn't fall into this.
It does, it does. You are actually also going to be regulating smoke shops, too.
We agree that smoke shops and vaping is becoming part of this umbrella.
Yes.
Good for us, yay. Because that's become a prolific problem. Don't know.
So within the limitations, he's fine.
By Sea Town.
By Sea Town.
So I think for that one, and Valerie, correct me if I'm wrong, if for whatever reason that that was zoned out in the legislation the board's currently considering, it would be an existing non-conforming. And so long as that business continued to operate, they'd be allowed to stay there. But if they lapsed for any great period of time, someone would not be able to come and open something similar in the future.
Time is a year, correct?
I believe it's a year, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Currently, unless we change, I thought it was six months.
Okay, so it's a relatively short period of time. So that makes me feel a little bit better. Stuart, the thing about including smoke shops and all that. So if I understand correctly, there is an increasing number of trucks that are now opening up as basically smoke shops. And we didn't consider a mobile smoke shop. So in Queens and Brooklyn, they're opening up, they look like food trucks. They're selling all the other stuff. Yeah, I know. Don't look at me like that. So, you know, we have to think when we do legislation, not about just problem solving, but thinking a little bit ahead. Because I don't think we have legislation that if you're on wheels, selling, being a smoke shop on wheels, that we have any legislation that would prevent that.
No, I'm also not sure of any municipality that actually would do that. If it were to sell any food, so any food at all, it would have to be licensed through Westchester County first. And then under our regulations, they would have to get a license. If it is simply selling smoked products, I mean, I would look into that to see if in fact.
They can.
Anyone has that. Or if in fact, the county is regulating that on its own, to some extent. Because I just honestly don't know, Mayor, with regard to that.
So we don't really need to investigate that. And if we can't cover it under this, we won't because we're not going to spend 100 hours on the maybe. But that is what's happening in the boroughs, in the city. And so, because, you know, people are clever. Entrepreneurs are really clever people. And so, once it gets here, we'll deal with it. I just want to know if we're covered for that. It sounds like we're not, so we're going to move on. We're not going to look into it until it does become a problem. Otherwise, we're never getting anything off the ground. Any other, what's happening? Valerie?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention one thing. The, so right now, we only have for the vape shops, smoke shops and cannabis and vape paraphernalia shops, we have restrictions of within 1,000 feet of an entrance to an adult-use cannabis retail dispensary or 1,000 feet of an entrance of an existing cannabis and tobacco paraphernalia shop. If you'd like to limit those shops from like, for example, schools, libraries, we can do that as well. And we can work that, those regulations into these proposed changes. The regulations from the school and house of worship really focus on cannabis, but we can also include that to deal with the vape shops as well.
My, I feel it's a good idea. Am I alone, I'm thinking that's a good idea?
Well, I hadn't thought of that, right? And that's not, I mean, the vape shops and the smoke shops are not governed by the same New York State regulations. So as long as we're doing it at the local level, because New York State tells us we have to, why not loop in these other two uses that we also have concerns about? I think it's a brilliant idea.
They're not governed under cannabis regulations.
Correct.
Which they are, but they are governed.
So we'd basically be saying, the state says cannabis uses have to be this far away from a school. While we're at it, we say smoke shops and vape shops also have to be just that far away.
Those that exist already to Dana's point.
Right.
They're going to exist.
One's in Arcadia and the other one.
Right, they're going to exist. This is going, all laws are always going forward.
And yet the gas stations do a little of it.
The gas stations, that's a different issue that is about enforcement because I'm not sure they're supposed to be doing half of that. So, but that's, again, a different issue. So did we agree just, I don't want to rush this through.
So we're basically saying no dispensaries in the downtown. So that's actually kind of a big step. Because we have, we have someone applying.
Front, yes.
Yeah, but you're talking, we're talking main, yeah.
So, so Valerie, I think what you said was the V C district, which is basically just.
That's correct.
Town core, Conservation Development. And I don't recall what the third one was.
The Planned Waterfront Sea, which is the, during, on State Street and Hunter Street.
So the places that have dispensaries licensed today, one is in S P N, one is in.
Okay, speak English for the, because this is a.
One is at the train station. One is at the far end of North Highland Avenue. And one is in the former Austinang Bakery. I believe what.
On Route 9, yeah.
The application we got last week for someone who is proposing a dispensary in the V C, which this legislation would prohibit.
Correct. I am okay with that personally.
I mean, Tarrytown has one right on its main street. You know, it's something, I don't know whether we want to investigate it more and talk to different people about it, or talk to the chamber, talk to whatever. They may have different feelings about it. You know, my concern with that spot is that there's going to be a nice, beautiful new market square across the street. And then you become, having to have enforcement issues possibly from people buying there and using, you know, across the street. But it's always just a matter of, I don't know, I'm still not completely convinced about Village Center, that's all.
So for me, we're three and a half square miles in this village. Lots and lots of churches, about 20 houses of worship. That doesn't affect me as much. Tarrytown is much bigger than that, both in mileage and in population and the growth because they do, it's just a bigger community. So, and a much larger business district, actually. They also have Route 9, just like we do, but they just have a lot more stores on Route 9 than we do. So they just have a biggest, bigger commercial area in general. So we already have three places, we're three and a half square miles. Much of it, you can't do it on. So it's a pretty high concentration with three. That doesn't mean you can't put more on the waterfront or on Route 9, which is a big commercial space or the commuters. That doesn't mean you can't put more on the waterfront or on Route 9, which is a big commercial space, or the commuters who come off like. Or for events, when we do events at waterfront. So I think we're, for me, I think we're in Croton Avenue. So I think we're pretty well covered in our.
I just.
Corridor or something, I'd pay with it.
My question is to Stuart, even though we, we pass a legislation and we, we eliminate these zones from allowing it. Is there, can they petition? What we did and can it be overruled?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh. Two ways. One, if before you pass a change. An applicant were to go to the Office of Cannabis Management and the Office of Cannabis Management were to say, you can't do that. Then we can't do that. If we pass the legislation and they say that, then basically it can't go into effect. So, yes, at the end of. Uh, something we were talking about earlier with, with, you know, with, with the chairs of the land use boards. The state has taken a very, very hard position against municipalities. There were two towns out in Suffolk County that, uh, attempted to what we call regular time, place and manner. And, uh, the, uh, the state said you can't do it. They sued. And the state put in papers to the court that basically says. We essentially preempt whatever you do, except for this very, very limited area. So in a nutshell, Trusty Fritchy, the answer is yes. Uh, someone could challenge it and say, it's simply not correct. And if that's the case. We have, you know, we essentially abide by. It'll be interesting to see what the court decides out in Brooklyn with regard to those two towns. But it's clear that the state is taking the position that, uh, if you decided not to opt out and you have these there. You got to have them there. And you basically can't say yes here and no there, unless you have a very, very, very good reason. And so, I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be a play here. And that's going to, I think it could come up in the VC district. It could come up on other districts as to. Why here and not there, particularly if you're having other retail here and not there. Because remember, Office of Cannabis Management and the State Liquor Authority are basically, you know, they're sort of cross, cross endorsing in a sense each other. So the answer is yes, it could happen.
Okay, so we could do what we feel good about. But ultimately, we could end up with a cannabis shop on Main Street if, if it went that way.
The answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
Right.
And we'll see how long that'll last as well, because what really has happened politically is those of us that took a shot. Are getting bashed. And those that didn't. Mostly, all of the affluent communities in Westchester County and Long Island, um, basically are skating. And so for me, it's once again. The good characters get punished by the state and the, and it's a good thing I'm not running for governor. And the bad, um, characters or the people that said they were going to do it and then pulled out, um.
Well, there are some, I mean, Pound Ridge is in Tarrytown, I think Rye. Um, so it's not, you know, some of the more affluent, you know.
Three, yeah, there's, there's a few. There, there's 45 to 50 municipalities, many of which are highly affluent, some of.
Croton is, yeah. Um. But yeah, I don't worry about what the more affluent communities are doing personally. Um. You know, but, uh. That was their decision, that's fine. Um. But otherwise, we are who we are.
Yeah, the comment wasn't about them. It was about the state's, uh, behavior, actually. That is, it's, it's just because the people said. Well, wait another decade, let those other people figure it out, and then we'll jump in. That was a big push. Um, even here, to say, why do you have to be first mover? Why don't you wait till other people do it? And so it seems to me from the economic model that you always want to reward the first movers. Rather than play hardball with the first movers and saying, yeah, you're going through a lot of change. Laws haven't really all been gelled. We didn't get all the things right. We didn't get all the import. And you're still willing to do it. So you're going to. To be rewarded, not. We're not going to play hardball with you, actually going to play softball. So that's where I was coming from. It's not about the affluent communities. It's about first movers should always get the benefit, uh, politically. Uh, we're not going to get that. Uh, but we should still do what we think is right, um, and justify to our community. Um, we have three places already with room for.
Is the third one that had run into a road bump, how's that going?
So the one that's at the train station is obviously up and running.
Yeah.
The one that's, um, at 50 North Highland is still under construction.
Yeah.
But they're making great progress.
Uh-huh.
Um, the one at 345 North Highland, I think their permit is pending, so they should be starting work shortly.
Okay, good. All right.
So that's like, you know.
I mean, to me, three is a perfectly fine number.
Yeah, three for three and a half square miles, I think is. And they're spread out, like if they're all on top of each other, you know, well, none of them are going to succeed. So, but in C, oh, the yellow, there it is. Good eyes. Hello, Pat.
Hello, so, so lower my hand. Um, so a couple, a couple of comments. One, I, I'm, I'm okay with the proposed, uh. Zoning districts being the ones to be not permitted from that perspective. I think that's an appropriate. Kind of number and given what you said about the percentage of districts which allow retail versus not allowed retail. I mean, I think that's a fairly like. Strong argument that, you know, we're not making it only one retail district out of 12. Like, so I think that's like. Fairly reasonable. Um, from that standpoint, the, I agree with the, with the, um. The addition of the incremental distance and location and time regulations for the vape shops from that perspective. So I'm like. Supportive of that. Um, good, good. Honestly, I think those are actually. My, my research indicates that those actually cause more issues than.
Mm-hmm.
Highly regulated cannabis shops. So from that perspective. Um, and then I have a specific question around the. Language around the parks that are primarily used as playgrounds, shall be deemed public use facilities? I think we had a conversation around that. And that's like, it's like, that means it's the predominant use, right? For that particular location?
That's correct.
That, okay. So like, for me, I still think there is a, um. Potential future. Action that the board may be interested in taking in terms of potentially naming the, uh. Playground at Nelson Park, like naming that a separate park.
Separate park, yes.
Then, in, in order to. Just like provide that playground as the, the designation that would kind of limit the. Things, the, 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 create, create that as a location to be, to be able to.
Because right now, it's just part of the bigger park. So the park is not, Nelson Park is not mainly, although it's a playground, right? Although it has baseball and stuff, but basketball.
It's got baseball, it's got tennis, it's got basketball. So like, any, for me, any reasonable person looking at that park would not. Me, would not say that the Nelson Park in general is a primarily, primarily public youth facility.
Right. Valerie, how, what's the process for, I don't think we've renamed or, I mean, it's a standalone. It's like, got a natural. Like hill, a border between that and the rest of the park. I mean, you throw in some pine trees, you create a fence, you got a separation. But what's the legal way of. Like, how does one go about doing with Patterson? Because I think we, that's where we left off last time.
Yep, I just wanted to bring that up and, exactly.
You want to pursue this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't think we got deeply into that, whether the board wants to pursue separating that park by name or ever, but if. And I don't think we need to do that tonight, but I think it needs to be looked at with a recommendation for the board about how one separates and renames or. Whatever that's specific park, that's basically one big playground at the bottom of the hill over there with its own. Um, space. So if somebody can get back to the board on that, that would be fantastic. Do we have any more conversation on this? It sounds like we have at least majority vote, if not a unanimous, on. What Valerie is asking for. I think we have a majority. Valerie, I'm looking at you. You can't see me.
Oh, yes, yes. No, I thought you were asking the board.
I'm looking, I mean, you're over here, but the camera's here. I'm looking at you. What else do you need from us? Because.
No, that's it, that's it.
Okay, great. Next.
Still the Valerie Show. Um, next is we're going to be talking about affordable housing, uh, set aside policy.
Okay. So again, this is a topic that has already been introduced to the board at the last meeting. Um, you had a number of questions. So let me just kind of back up as to some of the outstanding. Items that we were still dealing with. Um, I think for the most part, um, we did finalize how the board wants to proceed with the. Rules and regulations associated with the, uh. The rental set asides. Um, those will remain as in perpetuity. Um, and those will also still be as they have been as part of the, uh. Um, affordable housing regulations. Um, the for sale, um, the board seemed to be in favor of, uh. Considering or allowing for a potential amendment associated with. The timeframe. So instead of the hundred or 99 years or in perpetuity, that it would reflect, uh, the. Specifically, it would reflect the, um, requirements of that particular governmental agency funding the development. There were a couple of questions associated with this from the board that you asked us to go back to the applicant. Um, specifically, you wanted to know if there could be some sort of set aside for, uh, village residents. We did speak with the, um, developer for 34 State Street and we also, um. The village manager and myself and the, um, applicant also spoke with, um, Homes and Community Renewal from New York State. And they seem to indicate that they would be, they would welcome or they would allow for a potential 25% of the units to be set aside. For village residents, we just have to put together a little bit of a demographic and some additional information for them and like a technical memo. Which will really not, won't be an issue. And we can petition for that to take place. They did note that, because some of the funding, um, will be coming from Westchester County. So that part of the set aside would also potentially be for Westchester County, um, its workforce. Uh, to also be part of that preference. But yes, that, uh, the village resident preference is a, a possibility that we can pursue. The other question that you had, uh, dealt with the marketing plan, uh, the marketing plan for 34 State Street has not been developed yet, and that will be. But the, the applicants did provide me, um, Homes and Community Renewal Marketing Plan, Plan requirements, which I attached to your. Packet for your information. And then once we have a little bit more information on the marketing plan, we can always, uh, distribute that to the board. You also asked for some information on the anticipated sales price and the income, and that is also part of your packet. Um, that's on page two. And basically, you're looking at, um. More or less, uh, the total, um, housing sales price is about 300,000 to 333, uh, $37,000. And you're looking at, uh, and again, it varies depending on the, how many, uh, persons per household. But you're looking at somewhere between 95,000 to 170,000 dollars in income bands. So those, that's, uh, so that provides you kind of a sense of how much those units would be selling for and the income bands in which those units would be provided. And these are for the hundred, this is for the 100, uh, affordable homeownership units associated with 34 State Street. And then the last, uh, question you had is that. If the regulations for income restrictions were to expire in 30 years, would it be possible for the development to offer, uh. Those five units in perpetuity, because there was a question as to whether if we, if the village were to allow for the 30 years, but still have five units in perpetuity and the. Uh, the, the developer of 34 State Street came back and said they actually would prefer to have the same few, uh, period of affordability for all 100 units. Um, deal, uh, due to the landed, um, new community, new homes, land acquisition money within the deal. So that, I think, uh, provides you.
The last piece, you want to go through that again? You ran through it.
Sure. So there was a question. Yeah, so there was a question specifically from the village board. That if you, if the units were to expire and their affordability within 30 years, because that's the time period. That would it be possible for out of those 100 units, five units to be offered in perpetuity for 99 years? And the response to that was that the AHO program requires 30 years. But the affordability for this would be 50 years due to the Declaration of Restricted Covenants tied to the county. New Homes and Land Acquisition Money. But to have five additional units or to have five units go for all 99 years would be problematic. From the applicant's perspective.
I think to, to just simplify, because I think we're still a little bit.
Please do so.
Um, so you have different, you, you have state money and you have county money. Um, state is, uh, has, uh, um, allows for a 30-year affordability. The county money allows for 50-year affordability. But. The idea of trying to parse out five of the, the. The 100 units for, uh, affordability essentially in perpetuity or forever, um, is problematic. And it's problematic because I think also it is probably, like, I don't think that really addresses why it's problematic. But my sense is it's problematic, and Valerie, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you have five people are somewhat, in a sense, penalized. And how would you address, you know, if you had a choice, just say, to buy something that, that is more limiting and restrictive versus something that's less limiting restrictive? Most people will opt for the less limiting restrictive, even if they may not live there for the whole 30 years. So it does create sort of an inequity in the program if all of a sudden. Five units are. You know, going to be affordable forever, essentially, and the rest of the units are affordable for a period of, of 30 to 50 years. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think from the, um, developer's perspective, it just makes things a lot more complicated, right? And so, and, and I think the concern was also for, you know. For selling of those units as well, like you said.
And I think like, so I, I, I mean, I just want to say, like, if the things are complicated for the developer, that's one, one issue. Um. But I think the larger issue is it becomes a little bit of a. Difficult selling point and disadvantage for the potential buyer. Um, and that's probably overarching the, you know, if you're doing this, there is. You want to make sure you're doing it in an equitable fashion. And this would create an inequity that would essentially make five units harder to sell. Um, because I don't think you could. I don't know what, that there would be any mechanism to provide a benefit to the purchaser. So, um, to offset the fact that. If they wanted to stay there, they would never be able to, um. Realize a higher selling price. Um, so, um, that is, uh. In essence, the program, as, as my understanding is, you want to, um. Provide a level of affordability. Um, but there's also an incentive to the purchaser also over time. If they stay there or subsequent owners to be able to also be able to sell and, and, um, obtain, uh. The benefits of generational wealth, uh, from homeownership.
So I guess my question is, if I understood this right, you said that the state is good with the 30-year. The county is recommending the 50-year.
Yeah, that, that, Valerie, could you just clarify that? Because I, I'm not sure what.
Yeah, so I think there's two different, right. So I think bottom line is, I think that particular, uh. Development is proposing 50 years of affordability.
Because that the county soup, like, is, is longer.
Supersedes, right.
So it would supersede. Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. So the, the units would be affordable for a period of 50 years.
Right.
Is the recommendation.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
So in terms of your rules and regulations, it, there's, the language is still proposed. To say that the, 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 the term of affordability is tied with the funding source, right? The, the time period of the funding source.
Yeah. We want it 50 years. You know, our rules are into perpetuity, but this will be 50 years, which is still a long time. Um. I'm sort of, well, I was hoping for a third, which is what the developer told us. It's like, whatever developers tell us, it's like. Always gets shaved off as we go through these meetings. You know, another percentage, another, now we're at 25. We went from 30, 33 to 25.
But I, I don't recall it ever being 33, my.
Was what he said.
Okay. Okay, um, that's what the developer said, but this is what the state actually allows, so.
Understand that Karen. We get developers in front of us, we get landlords in front of us, we get all these people in front of us. Everybody tells us what they think we want to hear, we make decisions and then slowly but truly it starts moving, oh yeah, and never like in in direction for our constituents. So the newest little, the the newest little wrinkle is all of a sudden we're doing for county employees housing, like what's the workforce, county for.
No, no, the the workforce is um uh Valerie, it's it's does it does it have to? Like, do we, I thought we said we weren't.
Did you say county workforce? What did you say?
Yeah, so so specifically that because Westchester, this is, this is I quote from the developer, that because the funds from Westchester County will also be part of the project, it's anticipated that Westchester County will request that its workforce be included in the preference.
Workforce, meaning anybody from Westchester workforce or Austin workforce?
No, this would be Westchester County.
Nope, that's not what I'm saying, Karen.
No, this is Westchester County employees.
Okay.
But that would so uh Westchester County government employees. Yes.
That would be included included in the
Twenty five percent.
Twenty five percent, okay.
Does that include county police or it's just so?
Yeah, county police.
I mean, county money, isn't county money or tax money? Oh, okay.
What was it? My question is, what was the percentage for village residents or Austin residents?
So twenty five percent total of the units would be for preferences and of the preference list would include village residents as well as county um workforce, county government workforce.
Out of the gate, fifty percent could potentially be taken.
I don't know what percent could be ninety percent.
No, no, no.
This is the first I'm hearing of it.
Fifty percent of the units. Uh, I understand that, but if everybody got wins the lottery, fifty percent of that building is going to village and county.
Well, no, twenty five percent. So it's twenty five percent total.
It could be almost all of it to county and one guy from the village. Yeah, well, there has, it's affordable, so they have to meet.
That's correct.
But still affordable, you know, not everybody qualifies for affordable, correct?
That's correct.
So so just just one one comment, like I just did a quick search. Westchester County Government employs thirty thousand people. According to online resources. So the reality is you've just doubled the pool of potential people who are, you know, if as well, as long as they meet the um the financial, the financial, like financial limitations that are open for the lottery.
So our residents stand too loose in that.
Let's take a little step back because this isn't exactly how it works. So the the reality is it's not thirty thousand people because of the thirty thousand people, there's a a smaller, and I don't know exactly what it is subset of people who qualify. Similar for the thirty thousand people who live in Austin currently, the majority of people will not qualify um in either pool. So while it does and I think it's something that's worth a conversation with our county legislators, they can request it, it doesn't necess, you know, none of this stuff is written in stone. I think it's always worth a conversation. The reality is though, that the people who tend to on any project and the numbers bear out, people who want to live in this location in Austin are going to be the ones who qualify, who, you know, or believe they qualify based on income are the ones who are going to be most likely to apply. Um, so while even when you have no restriction, you do get a high number. It may not be twenty five percent, but you do get a high number of people who uh are within the municipality who apply. So um and part of it is because even right now, people who are hearing about it, hear about it here. Um, when they call us and say, one of these, because they're driving around, they see the signs for, say, thirty Water Street where there's no um, there's no uh local um designation. Um, they would drive around. We have them say, okay, there's going to be a lottery, the lottery will start approximately six months before the completion of the building. Ifka is keeping a list of all those people, they will be the first people notified when the lottery is out and and you do have a propensity for Austin or whatever municipality you intend to be the ones who apply in the greatest number. So I do think though it warrants um a conversation with the county to really understand what they're asking and um also to maybe drill down a little bit on on the funding, the conditional funding, is it really twenty five percent or is it a subset of that twenty five percent, they're not funding the whole project. So I think there's none of this is necessarily set in stone. And I think that people are trying to achieve a lot of objectives. And if there's anything that comes to over promising and under delivering, it's the idea that this is going to solve the problem of affordability. So um, I think it's worth conversation with our our county, our friends at the county too.
So just.
Absolutely. And nothing is set in stone. I just want to just, the reason why I'm highlighting this, first of all, so that everybody is is aware of this potential uh Westchester County um preference as well. And the reason why this is was flagged by the developer is that they actually have a project in White Plains where there was a twenty five percent uh preference provided to White Plains and Westchester County, and it's the same uh funding source. And Westchester County also asked to have be part of that preference. So the natural assumption is that this is gonna, that they're gonna ask for that as well. But we will talk to Westchester County and maybe we'll be able to have a different answer for you.
So just quickly, so the village applicants. Um, first responders would have to be pulled into that? Or is there any consideration for first responders having a set aside?
So the the so there's pros and cons to setting those things. Um, what we'd like to recommend is is that probably the best way to meet everybody's needs is make it broad so that if you qualify and you live in Austin, you're prioritized. Um, for a lot of these projects, when you start parsing it down to you need to be a first responder, you need to be this, you need to be that, it 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 does get a little bit more difficult for people who need the housing to qualify. Um, so again, there's we, you can set categories and and people do set categories. Um, I believe there is some criteria though that has to be met to establish those ca- categories, correct?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Designate like, you'd have to be able to show, this is the other thing that can be challenging, you'd have to be able to show demographic data that X number of first responders live in the village of Austin. That might be easier, but if you want to then say, if you wanted to do home health aides or people in the healthcare field might be harder. So that's when you start to, you know, you have to weigh what what you, what your goals are here and then make the decision based on that information.
Right. And some of the demographics go also go to like ethnicity and and so there's, there's more than just like where you live, there's other demographics that need to be um demonstrated to uh, basically you're demonstrating that your preferences are not inhibiting furthering fair housing.
Not, not a problem for Austin. Not, not a problem.
No, not a problem for Austin, and that's why we're recommending maybe just considering the village wide.
Right. So top line header, so we don't have another hour conversation on this. When we listened to this and when we wanted this, we said we're willing to go for the higher density that they're doing, higher than I was willing to go for, because the selling point was ownership, number one, which is a very big deal. So a lot of stats about what happens locally, whatever, is because it's for rentals. This is ownership. I think people will jump on this. Second headline is that we promised the public when we considered this. I don't, uh my my preference, my desire is not about developers. If I were a mayor in upstate New York, I'd want more development. It's not where we live, okay? I don't really care. All the developers make tons of money, not real interested in what their preferences, what they'd like, whether it's easier, I I just don't give a shit about any of that stuff. What I care about is Austin. The deal was that we were open this header one, ownership, that's really great. And then market rate rental in that highly congested historic area. Number two was that finally we're able to give people who live here, their children, their grandchildren ownership. And now it's like whittle here and you whittle there. I care about Austin, all this other stuff. Of course, White Plains workforce, it's the seat of our county government. So sure, that makes sense. Not here, though. I want as many of that twenty five percent to go to people who live here. So if we go to them, that's who gets it. That was one of the big selling points. So Valerie, whoever we have to speak to, if we have to speak to our county legislator, that's what I think we have to keep pushing on. Otherwise, it's just getting whittled away and whittled away. That's the goal here. Everything else is like, you know, process. And that's what we talked about from day one. Anything else? Valerie show?
Yeah, I I've got a bunch of technical questions about.
I'm sorry.
I've got a bunch of technical questions about the law, like the way that the law is written. Do you want me to go into those now or do you want me to?
Send her in.
Valerie.
Oh, either one, whatever you prefer, whatever the board prefers.
That was more a question to the rest of the board, given how much, how long the agenda is.
Does it materially change uh the headlines or is it more about verbiage?
No, I I think there could be, I I'll, okay, I'll talk, I'll I'll go through two of them, okay? Um, one, the and so this is going to the law, the the law text, okay? And there there was a change in here where um you you changed like sixty two dash three A, like it's the proposes a construction or substantial rehabilitation of six or more dwelling units was changed to market rate dwelling units. Like my implication of that is that it takes one potential affordable unit off the table because people would just like build, make it one less unit. Like, is that substantive or am I interpreting that incorrectly?
No, that's ju, no, that is for clarification because we just had dwelling units. And so the confusion was that when you have a hundred percent affordable housing development, do they have to then have a ten percent set aside of affordable housing?
Okay, okay, good. All right, I'm good.
And I remember that. Right, because this is affordable ownership.
Fair enough, okay. Um, in section D there, you added the clause around the the affordable housing housing units can be in a different building within the same development. Like it feels like, feels like that goes against the fundamental premise that the affordable units are equally dispersed throughout the entire development or throughout the entire building, right? So to me, that's a feels like a fairly substantive shift.
Yeah, so this one, we talked about this um because in this particular development for thirty four State Street, you have a hundred units of affordable housing in two buildings and you, because of the homeownership, and then you have the fifty units of rental. And the fifty units of rental that are market rate technically would owe five units of affordable housing. And they're asking that their five units be reflected in the hundred units that they're providing of homeownership. And so therefore, in order to do that, we have, we worked in this um this language so that the village board on, and it's not just an automatic, but the village board would have to approve the ability to have the affordable units in a separate building. And this is a particular situation where you have a hundred units of affordable housing and fifty units of uh market rate housing.
And that would be site specific and also.
That would, right, it would be site specific. That's correct.
Thank you. But but by putting this language in, it it now applies to every single potential affordable rate development that make them up. And so people could put, you know, to me, it's it's packing. Right? People can pack all the affordable rate into one building and we've not put them in another building, right? So to me that
It has to be on the same site, it has to be on the same site and the village and it allows for the village board to do that. If if, I mean, it's clearly up to you, but if the village board chooses not to move forward with that, then the and then the applicant has to put five rental affordable units within the fifty rental unit building.
Which which personally would be my preference, right? But.
It wasn't that easy, Valerie. There was a whole, like we talked about this forty five minutes.
Yes.
It isn't that easy, you know, the the that was the complication.
Sorry, Mayor, are you saying that this isn't a relevant conversation?
Yeah, we we talked about, we talked about this and they're putting this site together, the board will have to approve it. It doesn't just get done through the planning or zoning or anything like that. It had to do with this financing and it had to do with the belief that you're already providing a hundred affordable units, a total of a hundred and fifty units.
All right, I'll I'll withdraw the question, sorry.
Yeah, I know, it does open up that in other areas people can combine. That said, we would have, whatever board exists that time, they will have to approve it each and every time. No one else can approve it. And that's why we were okay with it. And the fact that they're offering a hundred affordable is already like offering a lot of affordable. That was a big part of a conversation.
Nope, I remember I was part of it, Mayor, so. No more. That's fine, Valerie, sorry.
Are those the two points? Did you have?
No, I've got, I've got more questions, but that's fine.
Okay, and none of this is like whatever we're discussing tonight, Valerie, what's like the next step with this? Are we like giving permission for some, what is, what is, look, what's the next step?
So I think, I think typically we we do a referral, right, Stuart, to the planning board?
What we would do is turn this into a formal local law. You would then refer this, as Valerie said, to the planning board, get their recommendation, which is required for any zoning. Actually, let me that this is not a change to the zoning code. So technically, Valerie, it doesn't have to go to the.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's a chapter sixty two change. So that we would turn this into a local law. You would review it, you'd call for a public hearing and it would go through its regular process like that. That that would be the next next step.
And what about that whole twenty five percent conversation?
Well, that's a, that's, that's a, that's a developer specific conversation to that project. It's not though those percentages don't appear in the local law nor in the regulations. Uh, what's in here is in terms of the number of years uh for the restrictive covenant, but in terms of set asides, which is what you're basically talking about, that's not in here. That's that's more a funding issue that would have to specifically be dealt with between, let's say, H E R, H C R, the county and the developer for this particular project or future projects.
It it's it's also important to understand, it's it's a discussion that I do think a building in White Plains, to the mayor's point, having you know, identifying uh prioritizing workforce may be slightly different than a building in Austin, given the fact that the the vast amount of the employees who work for the county are working in White Plains. So that would mean that they are residents or or they're working in White Plains. Um, that's a little bit different. Um, you know, and that's allowing people who work at place to live closer to their work. Um, I think that the conversation with the county, I'm going to recommend that um Valerie and I have a, and uh we have a conversation with uh the commissioner of planning to just get a better sense. Um, it's not clear to me that they would deny the funding if we had a legitimate concern about uh wanting to limit the housing here. It doesn't seem, I think this is something that can be discussed. So just because while I agree with Valerie, the that they asked for in White Plains, they'll probably ask for it here. They probably will. That doesn't mean that it's a you know, it doesn't mean that that's the end of the conversation. I think it warrants further discussion and we can start that with Blanca and then see where we have to go from there.
You might, um, I'm going to conclude on this. On the workforce, I wouldn't mind Austin workforce. I wouldn't mind if our teachers, first responders who currently don't live here, but work here. Um, if that's how workforce is done, police officers, when they start out, I think their salaries qualify. Um, open door employees, I mean, I don't know what the salaries are, Phelps employees, I don't know what any of these salaries are. But if people work, or Phelps is actually East Bay, so it's not Austin. But people who work here, I was thinking right away, teachers, artists, whatever, I don't know how they qualify or government employees and how that qualifies. Um, that would probably be considered part of the community if they want to really think about workforce, that might be sort of cool. But um, still, I I just, I wanted to be what we promised um as elected official, which is. But um, still, I, I just, I wanted to be what we promised as elected official, which is how much can we give Austin? Because we, we can't, under normal rules, um prescribe specific to Austin, on the rentals and all that. But here we're able to, so that was one of the, so I'd like to stay focused on.
I think that's an argument that, um, you know, it would be uh well considered with the powers that be.
This twenty five percent encompasses county, Austin, everything that we, for set asides.
The twenty
County employees.
Way we initially envisioned it is of the hundred units, twenty five of them, twenty five percent would be um designated for people who are already living in Austin. And workforce is sort of a general term, meaning like when they say workforce housing, what they're really meaning is a level of affordability, especially in an expensive place like Westchester where, you know, the, the average person, the average family that works good jobs can't afford to live. So this idea, and it could be teachers, first responders, policemen, uh, a, a range of hospital workers, whatever. Um, but the idea is that it's people that you want to be in your community because they're supporting your community in the private sector or the public sector. That said, you know, the, the, this issue comes up a lot, that people feel like the need is really great here, so we want to make sure that people who are here have first dibs, like the first rate of refusal. So that was how we had envisioned it. Um, to the degree that we can maintain that integrity of that, I think that that's the discussion we need to have with the county. Because I think the county wanting it to broaden it to the entire Westchester County workforce maybe doesn't make as much sense here as it does in White Plains.
Right, so I'm, I'm hearing two different things. Um, you're telling me twenty five units originally for, well, would be twenty five units. For Austin, but then when I questioned twenty five and I'm saying fifty percent, Stuart said, no, the twenty five percent
No, we, no.
Is, is, let me finish, all right? Would encompass Austin and Westchester employees. With government employees. Am I correct with that?
The county wanted to broaden that twenty five percent to include Austin residents and Westchester um employees.
Right.
But it would, so the larger pool, yes, larger pool for the
So larger pool versus a smaller pool, it was just Austin.
Right.
So it's the larger pool, not the smaller pool, like you said, that the twenty five units would be for Austin people. It'd be for that larger pool. Thank you.
Right. All competing for those, prioritize for those twenty five units, which I think complicates it somewhat. Um, the next, um, the next topic is, um uh, we have two requests for payment in lieu of parking, one from uh two hundred and seventeen Main Street and one from one seventy one Croton Avenue.
I can kick us off um on this. Uh, so good evening officially, board. Um, I also want to mention to the board that um we have uh both of the applicants here. Um, I know it's a work session. They were advised that typically you don't take public comment, but they wanted to be here. Um, so some of them are on Zoom and some of them are here in the room. Um, so I'd like to start with um just a review of what the, the P I L O P program is, since this is a, a first for us. Uh, this program was conceived, I think it was in late twenty twenty three. Um, and P I L O P is an acronym, Payment in Lieu of Parking. Um, in, in days past, if an application came in front of generally the planning board and said, I want to build a movie theater and I need, you know, twenty parking spaces. And for whatever reason, the site didn't accommodate it, we would say, okay, well, you're off the hook. You don't have to provide anything to, to anyone. The P I L O P, again, Payment in Lieu of Parking, makes it such that in certain zoning districts around the village, you no longer have that option. If you can't create the parking on site, you have to pay into a fund. Um, that fund is a first in, first out, I, I think is how we, yeah, first in, first out. Um, that can only be used for a very finite number of improvements to municipal infrastructure. So it can be used to manage the parking that we have, create new parking, um, invest in alternative mobility strategies like bikes or scooters or, or basically help to, to some degree to support our, our parking infrastructure. Um, and the fee schedule that was set up by the board initially is included in our fee schedule. Um, but just a reminder, the first five cars are five thousand dollars per space. Uh, between six and ten spaces is ten thousand dollars per space. Between eleven and fifteen, it's fifteen thousand dollars per space. Between sixteen and twenty, it's twenty thousand per space. And then if you need twenty one or more spaces, you pay twenty five thousand dollars per space. Um, and again, that money uh has to be spent by the, the village in a certain period of time and, you know, we, we can give a more thorough review, but just to sort of refresh. Um, we'll start with uh two seventeen uh Main Street, so uh, folks know it as the Midas Building. Um, basically, the Midas Building is not making any change to their footprint or not contemplating any change. But rather, um, they want to turn the second floor, which is currently a retail or office space, I believe, um, into residential, which would require them to have parking spaces that they currently can't fit on the site because it's completely built out, uh, that site. Um, so their request is to ask for two, uh, or no, excuse me, that one is three, uh, payment in lieu of parking spaces. So again, at fifteen or three spaces at five thousand per space, it would be a fifteen thousand dollar deposit into the village's coffers for purposes of, again, enhancing parking elsewhere. Um, I want to just sort of reiterate because this kind of comes up, and I know a couple of our neighboring communities have been struggling with the opposite of, of what I'm saying lately. The developer of anyone who's doing a P I L O P is not buying spaces for their exclusive use. So it's not like they're saying there's two spaces in that municipal lot and now those are my spaces and nobody else can touch them because I paid for them. That's not how it works. They're basically pooling in to, to our larger parking ecosystem and the, the spaces will continue to be first come, first served for the people who live in that building and, and elsewhere. Um, so again, for two seventeen uh Main Street, um, I'll, I'll pass it to Valerie. Um, we did discuss both of these applications with the planning board, um, because as part of their site plan approvals, this is something that, that obviously has come up. Um, so Valerie, I believe that for two seventeen for the Midas Building, the planning board was supportive um, of this application. They wanted to convey that uh their understanding of, of the payment in lieu was exactly for buildings like uh, the Midas Building downtown.
That's correct.
Landlocked, adaptive reuse, that they felt very strongly that, that that should be approved. Um, and so Valerie, I don't know if there's anything that you wish to add.
What are they building?
No, I think, or, I think you summarized it.
They're not building anything. They're changing it from office space into two residential units.
Two residential units, how big? What are they? Two bedroom each, one bedroom each, five bedrooms? What are they doing?
Um, we can look at the plans. They're not, I, I want to say that they're each two bedroom, they're both on the same floor and it's kind of like a, a yin yang kind of shape, um, from what I recall. Um Jamie, I can send you the link if you want to bring up the plans, but I don't have that information off the top of my head. I believe it's two units, though.
Okay, if you don't mind, thank you.
It is, it is two units. Um, and I believe, and so, and it's one point five spaces per unit, which is up to the three units.
What?
I mean, the three spaces.
People park now, it's a commercial space. Where do people park?
They can park uh at the metered spaces in the front or the free three hour parking in the municipal lot behind.
The building has no parking.
The building has no parking.
That's correct.
Be parking in the municipal
So
This is buying space in the municipal lot?
It, no, it, it's basically telling the property owner that you are exempt from putting parking on site or buying specific parking spaces for your residents. What would likely happen is the people living in that building would buy municipal lot um tags, which means they would be, you know, parking in any place that allows that municipal tag for daytime or nighttime parking.
Okay.
Which, you know, the, the most proximate one would obviously be the um, the community center park, like the um, the, not the community center, the Broadway parking lot itself. The one that literally backs up to that building, uh, is about half three hour parking and half permit spaces. Um, so that, that would be very proximate, it would make a lot of sense. Um, but also presumably in the parking structure, they would be able to just a short walk away, be able to have sheltered parking, so they might prefer that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Maddie. Did you send that to me?
No, I didn't.
Okay, sorry.
We're, we're gonna skip it.
So we don't know if it's a two bedroom or
Valerie just um indicated that the requirements are one point five spaces per, so that's a two bedroom, two, two bedroom units.
Two, two bedroom units, one point five.
Okay. So I think, um, you know, Mr. Gibbons is, is here, he's involved with the project. I don't know if the board has questions for him, um, but that, that's the information that we have to share. And, and if the board is interested in pursuing this, um, again, this is a first for us, so I'm not sure if it would require.
Yeah, I mean, Maddie, it might help just to give a little background. Um, so in the past, these, this zoning district and the zoning districts where we have the payment in lieu of parking had a parking waiver. And the way that the zoning was written was basically that the planning board gave a waiver for any time that they were not able to provide parking on site in those zoning districts. And I think the, the planning board and the village board had concerns with the fact that you know, you really wanted to try to get some of these um developments and develop, new developers to um provide parking on site as much as possible. And under certain circumstances, it made sense to allow for payment in lieu of parking where you actually have some, get, uh, obtain some revenue to help support, as Maddie said, the, basically your parking infrastructure within the downtown and some of your other more uh parking restricted areas. Um, so you're not necessarily stymying new businesses coming into the community or new um units within those zoning districts, but still encouraging for the development of parking on site as much as possible. And then also alternatives and additional funding to help support infrastructure where parking is not possible. So that's, that's the real, that's the iteration of where, what we are now looking at in terms of the payment in lieu of parking and why now you're seeing this for the first time, because this is the first application under this new program.
And Maddie, this is a one time payment, right?
Yes, one time payment, that's correct. And if we don't use it um to help develop our parking infrastructure in a, in a period of time, I don't remember, recall this, ten years. We have to use it within the next ten years. Otherwise, it gets returned to uh, to the developer.
I mean, that money's already gone.
Would be paid before the building permit is issued.
Yep.
All right. Anybody want to comment?
Uh, James Gibbons, if I may?
No, thank you, sir. I meant the board.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, no worries. Pat, any comments?
No.
Are you thumbs up, thumbs down? You want to think about it? It's our first one. We're thinking about it.
Oh, me personally, I think, yeah, I'm thinking about it, I'm I haven't come to a conclusion yet.
Okay, sir. Sir.
I'm inclined to uh agree, but I have a I don't know what I don't know sense still. There's a Pandora's box that we're opening here because parking uh, is perpetually a challenge. And whenever you have such a tight municipality, uh, this particular lever, I have a sense of the benefits and drawbacks, but I don't feel like I fully comprehend it necessarily, what the, what the kind of downstream effects may be. For example, like, is that, that amount enough? I don't know. I, it may be that more would be warranted to actually trade off what the long term um impact of uh giving this uh particular waiver essentially would be. Um, so that's my sense. I'm, I'm leaning yes, but uh I have those reservations.
Thank you, Dana.
Um, no, I, I basically agree with the deputy mayor. Um this whole, you know, I'm still trying to kind of rock my brain around the fact that you can pay for parking spaces you don't have. But the people still need to park somewhere. You know, for me, it's kind of like, how does it solve a problem? I don't, I don't know.
I, I think that's a fair criticism. I, I think that's fair. Um, I think the, the intent um is, is two things. I think the first one is it's better than what we had, say, five years ago, because before people would say, I can't provide parking. And we would say, okay, man, like, build your thing and, and then, you know, we're, we're no better off. Um, I think the second thing is, and, and we did talk a lot with um the parking consultants Nelson Nygaard and also Valerie's firm um, about sort of what other communities do about this pricing. Um, it's a little bit market driven, right? And because we haven't done this before, it's not entirely clear. Um, you know, i- if, if this would be appealing to, to developers or not appealing based on the pricing. And if someone could maybe squeeze another two spots on the site, would they do it for five but not for ten? And, you know, things of that nature. Um, so I think with scale, we, we would definitely see a little bit more about whether those numbers work. Um, but to your point, deputy mayor, I, I, you know, we, we could possibly consider, I think, you know, when we were talking about the parking structure, and granted, that's covered parking and it's on a challenging site and things of that nature. I don't recall what the per stall um rate was, but it was certainly more than five thousand dollars by quite a bit. Um, so that, that may be something that we wish to consider.
But this would also fall under our parking, uh, our park, our fee schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Can be changed.
Sure, yes.
Well, that's what they're saying, that one, I think about it. So for me, there's a dilemma in this spot. Um, and the dilemma is that that parking lot is already oversubscribed. Between the commute center, the con, you know, we keep selling things multiple times. Like, when you have a business down there, that's a parking lot people are using. Um, and we are opening more businesses there and they need those spots. The businesses only need the spots during the day, so it is such, because the community center is there as well, it is such an oversubscribed area that um the thing about commerce is you're in and out. The thing about residential is you know, that's like, we don't make laws for one building, but I would feel differently in some other locations than I do here. So I'm still, I still want to sort of let sit with this. I also, my gut says we're charging way too much on the, on the lower end because um, the value of what a landlord gets for units, even today, forget what it'll be in a year or two years, far exceeds. This is like nothing. It's like one month. And the idea is not to encourage or discourage. It's an overcrowding situation uh for parking. We have a parking issue now. You could argue, hey, they can go down to the new lot that we're building, but we keep promising those also and telling those things in the museum when you have a hundred people coming to watch, there's only so much linear footage for parking. The state road part, right, the Route nine part is not really available, so it'll have to be in that parking lot. The street on that corner, they can't really park. Um, so you're really pushing more and more people. Um, and you know, my feeling is that we've turned residential units not into housing. We've turned them into a huge business. It's probably the number one business now in Westchester is landlord-ing. And shoving more and more stuff into a building. I don't know this building well enough. A two bedroom might be a beautiful thing there for some family. I just don't know it well enough. I, I know it from the outside. I haven't really thought about it. I have this mixed emotions and the pricing, I think, is off. Um, I don't know what the right price is. It's always a conversation with the right prices. I do know that when you supply more parking, you're supplying landlords with more housing stock to charge more money for. That I do know. And that I don't think is a good path to go on. Um, and more cars. And like this perpetual issue. And then the businesses complain because basically you now have residential people, some of whom work from home, so they're parked twenty four hours a day and their businesses now don't have parking. Then, so there's a trade off. I'm not sure exactly where we are in that. In downtown, you drive through it at certain hours, it's pretty empty. You drive because we now charge for parking. A lot of municipalities are struggling with this. Sleepy Hollow is struggling with this. Starry Town is struggling with this. I mean, you can't get parking in some of these communities now. So I'm gonna so- sort of sit with this, um. You know, and we're, I don't know if there's a time element issue. What's the time element issue? Because I'm gonna feel like there is a time.
There's nothing in the code that says by when you have to make a decision. What happens is your decision is ultimately then transmitted back to the planning board, because the planning board cannot act further
Right.
until this board makes its determination. So that's
So from a humanistic point of view, people have architects, they have site things, they've got lawyers, they've got painters, they've got electricians. They want to get going, they've already paid for things, like from the human aspect, not from the code aspect. What does the timing look like?
Well, the next planning board meeting is at the, the end of January.
That's correct.
I would think if the board could make a determination prior to that meeting, and it would be through a resolution, either of approval, disapproval or modification, uh, then that can be communicated, and Valerie and Maddie, correct me, that can then be communicated to the planning board. And they can then let the applicant know and then take the next actions. So uh, there is no December planning board meeting, so you at least would have until, you know, you have a few meetings to continue to think about this before you ultimately have to
I don't know if it's gonna need that much time.
Can we hear from the
Yeah, I just wanted to hear what the codes were. So Stuart, end of end of January, I need like a timeframe, because we leave here, we go on to the next thing, the next thing, the next thing.
Why don't we?
When do we have to come up with an answer?
The first January work session.
I think that's fair. We, the first January work session is the 14th. So we could bring it back then, because then if you had it, if you had a resolution on the 21st, that is before the next planning board meeting. So I think that works well in terms of that timing. Thank you, Matty.
If I might just make two additional points that, that, you know, I wanted to correct myself first of all, and I think, if Mr. Gibbons is gonna speak, he might also make this point. I misspoke. One apartment is a two-bedroom, the other is a one-bedroom, for what it's worth. The second is that, just as a reminder, while certainly I, I think everything that, that the board member said is valid about parking, hopefully the road diet will also be going into production at, at some point, which will, to some degree, make parking more available on, on that direct stretch right outside of Health Smart.
Will overnight parking be available in those?
I don't think we've decided how those spaces are going to be utilized. So that's another opportunity to, to sort of widen the decision.
How many years away are we on that? I mean, it's 20-something years. I'm just saying.
We are waiting patiently. The final comments were due to the DOT from the regional offices yesterday.
Okay.
And then, I, I am cautiously optimistic, maybe overtly optimistic, that we'll hear back from the DOT with any additional comments before the end of the month. We should have a final, you know, we should be ready to go, out to bid by spring of 2026. Then the job would start the latter, you know, probably second quarter if things, you know, if the DOT doesn't have any major delays. We're about a year.
Taking a bet.
I, I'm trying to be, you know, literally, really.
We had this exact conversation a year ago.
We did. But this, this.
Literally.
But yesterday we spoke to the DOT and they, they, they are waiting for the, they're, they're getting the comments as of yesterday. I don't know if they got.
It's nice to see you're not frustrated. It's good.
I, I'm not frustrated. It just, par for the course.
But there will be a lot of construction going on there, which will also prevent things from happening for like, you know, X number of months.
Yeah, that's like a.
Normal construction, whatever. We see that all over town. Okay.
You know, we, we are, we will have plenty of ways to use any payment in lieu of, over the next 10 years, I'm quite sure. But, you know, there are a lot of different considerations.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have a huge construction going and that's legitimately a parking lot. So that's a pretty straightforward line. Mr. James Gibbons, correct? Sir? Is he in the panel?
If he's here, he has a phone number or he's listed under a different name.
Okay. Well, we can move on and then he can come back. Jamie, if, can you write him in the chat and just say, you know?
We don't, we don't keep the chat open. We don't have one.
Oh, you can email him? Okay. There's a rule we just don't have.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have his information, but if you send it to me.
Sorry, I have access now, Mayor.
Oh, great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. It's okay. We will, you come back in later.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Um, so I just wanted to, confirm what Matty had said, that it's, it's basically a two-bedroom in the front and a one-bedroom in the back. But in communicating with my client, Maria De Silva, who's also present on the Zoom, she would be willing to pay for parking permits if that made sense. Or any other option if, if this program is not agreeable to the, the Board of Trustees.
Did De Silva's own this building?
Yeah, Maria De Silva, and she's present on the Zoom call.
How long? You're the lawyer?
No, I'm the engineer of record. I created the plans, Mayor.
I see. I got it. So two-bedroom, one-bedroom?
Yes.
I don't either. How long has, have they owned it?
Maria, if you can unmute, but I'm gonna guess that at least, at least for, 15 years or more.
Yeah, maybe it's the other building? Yeah, somebody sold to somebody, right? Okay.
So, you know, Maria's been there for, for a long time. She's the, it's the Midas Building, yeah.
I'm trying to bring Maria, but she's listed as 65017, but I'm trying to bring her over. She has her hand up. But I'm sorry, I don't know that it's working.
Okay. All right. So did you want to add anything else?
She's here, so she just needs to unmute.
5017. Okay.
Maria, is that you at 655017? You can take your hand down and unmute?
She just uses the number.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm communicating with Maria by text that she's trying to get in. She's owned the building for 23 years.
Okay. It's one building? Okay. You and I have the same thought, right? This building went through some stuff, yeah? It's the other one. Okay. Alrighty, so we're gonna think about it unless Mr. Gibbons or Mrs. Silva have anything else to add, and we're gonna move on.
Thank you, Mayor. We just are willing to work with the village if there's other options, if this doesn't, make sense, and we're glad to cooperate. And thank you for the, the time to speak tonight.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, next. Village Mayor's side here, you're gonna take over.
I, I'm, I'm here.
Deputy.
Then we have the second of, of our two pileup conversations. This is for 171 Crotton Avenue, an application that's also in front of the planning board. I know that the owner, Mr. Bonfiglio, is, is here with us. So the, the planning board felt a little bit differently about this application. For those who aren't aware, the site is currently not in use. It's at the corner of Pleasantville Road and, is it, Crot, Crot, Crotton Avenue, sorry, and, and Sherman Place, right? Sherman Place. So if you know the Roosevelt Square building, that has Chinese restaurant, laundromats, got tanning, and a deli, it's just to the left of that. So right there at, at the four-corner intersection. And what Mr. Bonfiglio and his team have proposed, is a mixed-use building that's retail and residential components. The planning board has been working with Mr. Bonfiglio's team for quite some time on a variety of, of site issues. And ultimately, because of parking conditions in the neighborhood and also some things going on on the site, they were not able to make a recommendation to, to the board on this particular application. The application would require two payment-in-lie parking spaces. Obviously, you know, the, the board's familiar with that neighborhood. There's no municipal lots nearby, so this would basically mean, you know, overnight hardship parking for, for folks who needs to park overnight or two-hour minimum parking, I think, in that neighborhood during the day. Valerie, did I miss anything?
Nope. You raised the concerns from the board.
No spots on the site? No parking spots on the site?
So they're proposing four parking spots on the site? So they are proposing some parking on the site, but not for everything on there that's required as part of the expansion that they're proposing. And the, and that's part of the reason the planning board, had concerns with the current use of the site and the current parking situation. And the site is actually being used for parking at this point in time. And that they have concerns with adding some additional part, off-street parking, more or less, or getting the payment in lieu of parking, that it would exacerbate the current situation.
So I have one question. Where is the closest overnight or hardship parking in that area?
I would.
Because I don't believe any on Sherman.
I don't believe it's on Sherman, but I think it is on.
On the other side of Triangle Park. From Marshall down to Sherwood.
That is, that is likely correct.
Marshall to Flavelle on Park Avenue, there's no overnight park, no hardship. So I'm curious as to, and I'm 99% sure, Marshall Place, and Charles Place, don't have, I could be incorrect on Charles Place. For.
How much are we looking to build there?
So.
Valerie, or you?
Yep. Valerie, do you have your memo pulled up? I'm trying to look up the parking map.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was the question?
What Mr. Bonfiglio's project is, I know that it's retail on the first floor.
Oh, yes. It's a, it's mixed use with office on the first floor and two, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor.
Two, two bedrooms.
And the site was formerly, I think it was like a, a body shop or a mechanic.
It's a gas station.
Automobile. Two one-bedrooms upstairs.
Two, two bedrooms.
So I guess, I don't want to get into the design of the building, but I mean, we know there's vehicles parked in front of the building right now.
Yep.
Is the front of the building staying the same? Is it changing? Is it gonna match the existing, the building, the Delgado's building? You know, is that a possibility for parking spaces for your businesses in front of the building?
Yeah. Also, isn't the, didn't the planning board like already look at the site plan, Valerie?
They did. And so I think the concern is, I mean, they still think the site plan is pretty tight, and I think the concern is the, the, the two additional spaces that they're asking for, for this particular project.
Because we also, we have across the street, we've gotten lots of complaints from that neighborhood about,
Yes.
the parking on that street, like lots.
Yes.
Because already the commercial businesses there are parking everywhere. Right into the residential area.
That's, that's correct.
Right. Okay. So you're gonna have two one-bedrooms. And you need two more spots.
There, there was a plan to mitigate the parking situation on Sherman Place. I actually wrote a letter. If you don't mind, I could read it. I'm not.
Well, he's tall, I think. Yeah, we, we got that letter.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Uh, would you like me to read the letter?
You submitted the letter, correct?
No, I did not. I just wrote this today because I just received the memorandum and, another letter from Mr. Santucci, which I.
You could read, you could tell us. It's, it's a work session. It's a legislative, which means that we generally don't have the conversations. I know you're here. You understand the issue. I'm adding complaints from the residents of the commercial parking, of, including on your part, on your lot, to date. Yeah, on that lot, of people parking on the streets, people parking to, I mean, and all the way down to the street to where the park is, and the commercial folks across the street from you and diagonally across from you. Lots of vans, lots of commercial vehicles, early in the morning, et cetera, et cetera. So you could read, you could tell us whatever it is that you want to tell us, because you already heard what the planning board said.
There, there's some additional site issues which involve a culvert. I'm not sure if you've heard about this, but there is a waterway. It's a culvert for stormwater for the village, and it runs underneath this particular building. It has since collapsed. So there are other kind of, I guess what I'm saying is it's, it's in the village's best interest, I feel, that this takes place because we are assuming the responsibility of now replacing or repairing said culvert. It runs underneath the building and it's collapsed outside. If I may. Okay. Dear Mayor Levin and members of the Village Board of Trustees, my name is Michael Bonfiglio. I am the owner of the property at 171 Crotton Avenue and Two Sherman Place in Austin, New York. I want to take this opportunity first and foremost to thank you for your time and hearing our application for payment in lieu of parking as pertains to the proposed building construction and betterment of 171 Crotton Avenue. I also want to take this opportunity to respond to the current memorandum in place as well as Mr. Santucci and his objections. I have also, I have to also state the logistical and practical reasons for this construction to take place, which in my opinion greatly benefits the village's interest. Essentially, as many of you know, we had roughly a 30-month planning period, and many delays due to the existing culvert, which runs under the building and serves the village's stormwater drainage system. The system is crucial for the village infrastructure, and it has currently exceeded its service life and has collapsed outside of the building, at, outside of the building on 171 Crotton Avenue on the west side towards Sherman Place. This condition has made an unsafe condition for vegetarians and needs to be fixed. It has also made an unsafe condition for the current building, as per our engineer, who states that the existing collapse could affect the integrity of the building, specifically on the exterior wall. Future continued deterioration and further collapse of said culvert could cause a threat to life and property damage. Our plan, as you may or may not know, includes the repair to this culvert, which is an absolute necessity based on the opinions of all engineers involved, including the village's engineers. Regarding the memorandum, I do want to say that the pictures located on page two are a bit deceiving. At a glance, the first two photos, you will see 10 vehicles parked on the property at 171 Crotton Avenue between the front and rear of the property. One of these vehicles belongs to a crossing guard, whom I've given permission to park there while she's assisting the children during hours when school is released. This leaves nine vehicles, which are all service vehicles for Two Sherman Place. The issue, or deceiving part, is that you can't see the parking lot located at Two Sherman Place in the photos, which is empty with the exception of two vehicles. We have space for 11 vehicles between the parking lot and tandem parking on the north side of that particular building. This has not been utilized lately, as it should, because it has just been easier on our daily operations to have the vehicles across the street when not in use. If the payment in lieu of parking is approved, these vehicles will simply go back across the street to Two Sherman Place. I'm sorry, lost my part here.
I'm sorry. Can I ask you a question? Two Sherman Place, is that the Trolley Barn? You own that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the majority of the vehicles in the photos, including photo three, where they're lined in the street, are office workers, and employees that come and they'll take a commercial vehicle and leave their vehicle outside. So the plan to mitigate that, to actually clear up Sherman Place completely, would be to open up the rear of the building. I have a, a door in the back of the building, which you could access from Park Avenue. And Park Avenue is, it's wide open during the day, pretty much every day. So if we took, I don't know, 10 cars and put them on Park Avenue and use the rear entrance of the building, that would completely clear up Sherman Place.
Shouldn't have a letter that other people haven't seen, and I'm not sure what you're gonna be talking about. And I don't know if this is the place, time and place for that, but, it's not the time, place. And half of your letter is a complaint about the village. It has nothing to do with two bedrooms, two apartments being built. In fact, none of your conversation has anything to do with the change you want to make. It all has to do with the village, how you're gonna clear parking, has zero to do with what's being asked, which is to build two units on that building and create two more rentals for your building. And it's already commercial on the bottom, so that's not actually a real change. So I appreciate it. It's just not actually relevant to the conversation at hand, which is about parking, because you are building residential units. If you weren't building those residential units, this wouldn't be even a conversation. So I appreciate the letter. It addresses none of that. What I heard a lot about is complaints about a culvert and the village and all of that. So that's okay. Not what I expected, right? Because not really to point. And there are, there is another letter, but, you know, the public doesn't see any of that letter. That's why work sessions are really presentation from the staff to the board. So I'm gonna get back into that mode, if you don't mind, which is the staff informing the Board of Trustees. The legislative sessions are for people when they want to speak to the board, the public. They want to get themselves, and they walk in and, you know, or they can write to us or whatever. Is there anything else that this board needs to know about this property? I mean, this is a, this particular area in the past years has become very problematic for the residents there, for the traffic, for the multiple vans, trucks parked there, for the noise, and a whole bunch of other stuff. The other property, Stuart, or Matty? for the noise, um, and a whole bunch of other stuff. The other property, Stuart or Maddie, is not this gentleman's property, right? Where Delgados and stuff, that, is that a separate?
That's Mr. Santucci who's here. That's right. He has.
You own the, the, the property next to it. I, 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 I'm good. I just wanted to ask, it's okay. Okay, so now because I opened it up to one, I'm gonna have to, which is why I shouldn't have opened it up to anybody. That said, you can sit down. It's fine. This is a work session. We're very casual. It's a business meeting. The government, uh, piece is next week, that we do that alternating weeks. Um, before I get into that, is there anything else I need to know from you guys about this property that I'm not aware of?
No, I think.
Need to know anything else here?
I think you've heard it. It has been before the planning board for a lengthy period of time.
Okay.
Is this letter the same letter that we've seen?
It's the, the four page le- Same, exactly.
Okay. I just didn't understand. So one person owns their neighbors, one person owns one, and a budding right next to it is Delgados and everything else is another building and you own that. And you've owned it for a long time, I believe. So the whole parking lot in the back, not immediately behind this building, belongs to you for your customers and your, and your people that rent from you. Okay. I'm gonna give you like two or three minutes or your daughter, because I already opened the door and, and that was, that was, I already opened the door, so we'll get that. I just want the board to know that we're gonna have to speak to our attorney. This is a bigger issue. Uh, but people are here. I don't want to, you know. I, I, I apologize for opening the door and now the door is open, so now both people have to walk through. That's okay. Okay, so Jamie, did you hear that? Courtney Santucci.
I didn't. Is the microphone on?
He wasn't on a microphone. That's why we're repeating it. Courtney Santucci.
It's gonna take a moment. Okay, Courtney, you just need to unmute and you can put your, um, hand down.
Ms. Santucci, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, I'm going, we saw the, we got the letter.
Um, I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes, please. I don't want this.
This is not a planning board and I don't want this to be a battle between two neighbors. That is not what our legislative body does. We don't sit in judgment of two neighbors arguing over. We, that's not what we do. But if, because I opened the door, I'm gonna open that to you. If you could summarize for me, we got the letter. We're, we read it. So I appreciate that. What would you like to add to this conversation?
Um, so I was here to read this letter on my father's behalf. I don't know if there, I mean, I can read key elements of it, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, um, so again, my name is Dr. Courtney Santucci. I'm presenting this letter on behalf of Dennis Santucci, the president of Dunn Court Limited, the owner of the building at 173 Croton Avenue. Um, Mr. Santucci has written and appeared before the planning board, including at its October twenty eighth meeting, to object to this project on a number of grounds. He respectfully submits this letter to likewise object to the applicant's attempt to avoid providing the necessary parking for its unduly oversized addition to its adjoining building of a new second floor and ground floor expansion. Not only is the applicant providing insufficient parking for the proposed expanded mixed-use building, but although inexplicably not shown on a site plan, the applicant is actually eliminating at least four existing off-street parking spaces and two curb cuts, thereby creating the deficiency. This parking issue is of particular importance to Mr. Santucci and this building, since due to the lack of parking availability in the vicinity caused largely by the parking demand for properties of the applicant, people are utilizing the applicant's adjoining property and other nearby businesses are improperly using Mr. Santucci's Dunn Court parking lot, sometimes for the entire day. This interferes greatly with the business being conducted at Dunn Court at 173 Croton Avenue, including the pop, the popular deli. As you mentioned, Delgatos. Um, there are a number of, um, sections that were presented in this letter. I won't go into too much detail here for this purpose of time. But Mr. Santucci respectfully submits that, that upon its required inquiry, the board should not make its required determination that the applicant's proposal does not present an appropriate case, that parking cannot be appropriately located on the proposed site plan and that the applicant's site-specific plan is not equal to or better than the strict application requiring on-street parking. The applicant acknowledged to the planning board that under the code, its project required three parking spaces for its new second floor with two one-bedroom, one hundred thousand plus square foot apartments and three spaces for its expanded first floor commercial space for a total of six required spaces. And the site already has at least eight spaces. However, the first floor addition is eliminating at least four of these spaces. Simply to make its building larger, the applicant is eliminating at least four off-street spaces in the front of the building and two of the curb cuts serving them. The building previously housed a gas station nearby, thereby reducing the available spaces to four in the rear, two of which were in the attached grass spaces. Thus, the applicant has created its own self-imposed hardship of the two-space deficiency, for which it's seeking relief from this board. There is no need for the board to grant such relief just so the applicant can double the size of its building. Now I'll call it there for the sake of time.
Thank you. How long have you owned, how long has he owned the building? Cause you're on the microphone. It's just easier. Okay, great. How long have you owned the building?
171 Croton.
So when you bought it, it looked like this, the way it looks now, correct?
The board, the question is, you're prepared, if you can reach consensus tonight, or like the other one, if you want to think about it and then have another discussion at the work session on the fourteenth, uh, to make a determination.
I have to go look at it.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, we can hold this till the four, we can come back on the fourteenth, you can come back on the fourteenth.
I, I also, um, regretfully did not link the, the floor plans, which I realize now would have been very helpful to, to this conversation. So I'll make sure that the board can see that.
Well, we're looking at it here. Bob has it. Expansion of the existing building, right? Going up. Are you going in the front? Right. Okay, I think you didn't go up to a microphone. I'll just say it. You're going up and you're going out. So I think, I would say the answer is yes. Because front or back, it's a corner. Front, back, doesn't matter, because there is no front and back. It's a corner property. Um, okay, so we'll look at it. So we want to sit with it, is what I'm hearing. Am I correct? Similar to the other one until January? Okay, and then if we have more legal advice or whatever is happening. Um, interestingly, the planning board is not, no, no, no. Let me, I don't care. Here's, here's the thing. Didn't need to open the door in the first place. I feel like, you know, now I've got to give everybody their fair shot. I, that's, it's all good. Really, the planning board heard, well, the, the truth is that this is the role of the planning board, okay? They heard everything. They made their recommendation. They went with one in one way and, you know, this is what they do and they spend a lot of hours on it. We are really here for, when things really sort of need an exception, if you will. And even then, not necessarily what we want to spend all our time on, especially when we could see that we've got neighbors who are, um, arguing over it. Imagine it might have looked different if your neighbor said, I love this idea. This is fantastic, great for business. And if your neighbors who are residences and the commercial businesses that now are parking vans and, you know, the delivery vans and tow trucks and all the other stuff in a, you know, right a hundred yards away from residential area, might have looked different. This is a little bit of an issue, right? It's a normal issue for municipalities. It's not, there's nothing abnormal going on here. The only difference is we don't take questions. So this is a work session. We keep it open to the public, so the public has the opportunity to come and hear it, or they can go and look at it zoom and we record it all. All good. But it's really not a Q and A, uh, position. So we'll go, because we have trustees who want to go and see and, you know, see what's going on for ourselves, which is very helpful. And I'm sure that once this goes public, some of the neighbors will be chiming in as well. And our attorneys will be chiming in, and I think we can go to the next, um, next item.
Okay, um, next on our agenda, thank you very much, Valerie.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Um, next on our agenda, um, we have been talking for, um, you know, sometime, um, really, I think since, since COVID too, really uh, changed the way we do a lot of things, um, in terms of meetings. Um, the fact that we're having a hybrid meeting right now, um, and that's becoming more except, you know, expected, um, and sometimes, uh, somewhat challenging to orchestrate.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, challenging to orchestrate. Um, and, uh, we have, you know, excellent support staff. We have a, a lot of people involved in working on these things. Uh, Jesse does a great job. Um, one of the challenges though that we have is the need to be a little bit more flexible um, for meetings, not just board meetings, but for, uh, land use meetings, for other meetings, um, where staff really doesn't, um, have, uh, the ability to, uh, enter the fifty-five different passcodes and two-factor authentication on five different pieces of equipment to get a meeting to run. And you've been, many of you have been here when we've struggled with that, when we haven't had the benefit of Jamie and Jesse being here. Um, so, uh, Jamie had, has been, um, you know, talking to A1, um, as far as, and also other municipalities. Um, there is a technology that's relatively new, um, uh, called an owl, um, which is basically a, a camera that is voice sensitive. So it will sort of turn to who's ever speaking. It will record and it will be, it will allow you to, um, record the meetings. Um, we still would need GoTV for certain things, um, and, um, but this would sort of facilitate the whole process and make it a little bit more streamlined, a little less convoluted. Um, some of it was out of necessity. Some of it's also because we've changed the way we're broadcasting. We don't necessarily have to broadcast live onto, um, closed circuit anymore. So there's a lot of different things going on and we're just trying to, again, streamline the process and make it easier to have these types of meetings, not just for our board meetings, for the town board meetings and as well, but for all our meetings, um, so that we can conference people in and, and just facilitate that. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie to talk a little bit more specifically about, um, the owl technology and what we're proposing, um, which would be to start with this, if the board's in agreement, to start in this particular, uh, you know, in the boardroom. Um, if it works and it goes smoothly, we could consider putting it in the courthouse too. It, it wouldn't be anything that would interfere with court during regular operations. It's very, you know, it's literally like having really, um, a, a camera and a microphone just sitting there to turn on when you need to use it. Um, so with that, I will turn it over to Jamie.
Thank you, Karen.
To reflect that trustee, why does recuse yourself?
Okay, thank you. Um, so basically, an owl is similar to, if you know what an actual owl is, their eyes move in a three hundred and sixty degree way, and this is basically like that. So when you're watching our board meetings, you'll see that, um, we have someone, we have Jesse who goes and puts the camera to each person. But if you look at the TV right now, you'll see that it's just on the main group. The, we only have the ability to do that and we need a tremendous amount of support to be able to do that for a Zoom meeting, a hybrid meeting, for anything. But with an owl, we would be able to integrate it into no longer needing the microphones that are in front of you and it would be just the press of a button from an iPad to do an instant meeting or similar to what we do for our webinars, uh, go in from a laptop like you see in the back of the room when you see me, go in the back and start the meeting and, and leave the room. Uh, it's very simple. Um, most of the equipment that we have, uh, is off warranty. We have one piece of equipment that is coming up with warranty in June, which is what is used to put the information onto the channel. Um, and then once that goes, the company no longer exists anymore and they will not have the parts anymore. So since everything is off warranty and there really is nothing else that exists, uh, that the municipalities are doing, uh, having an owl makes the most sense.
Okay. One quick question. The owl would replace the, the microphones we have here too. So it, it's a mic'd camera system, so it does address the, uh, issue we have with microphones, generally speaking.
It, it would actually pick it up like how that person was speaking in the back of the room and I couldn't hear them. We would be able to hear that. It would pick up, when the, these microphones can pick up any ambient noise in the room, uh, this would eliminate that where maybe I won't have to say, I can't hear you. So that would, uh, that would be removed from, um, the equation.
Right. So this system physically sits where in this room?
It is, uh, we initially were going to try one that was in the ceiling. You'll probably see that in my memo. But, uh, instead it is going to be something that would probably be around where Stuart is sitting in the room. It's a unit that would be on a table that would work throughout the entire room. So the cameras that you see on the wall would be disconnected, the rack in the back of the room, uh, in the kitchenette would disappear and all of the AV equipment that we have, uh, would be surplus.
Okay, and what's the cost?
Total cost, uh, for, everything is seventeen and seventeen, just over seventeen thousand, and that is with labor and the court, but specifically just in the boardroom for the equipment is fifty-six hundred.
And there's must be a licensing fee every year or something.
There is no licensing fee for it because we would be utilizing Zoom and we have a Zoom account, which we're already paying for.
Okay. It's only, you can only use it through Zoom or you can use it through Teams?
You can use it through Teams also.
Yeah, multiple platforms.
All right. You said you've seen it in.
Yes, I was fortunate enough to be invited down to a Tarrytown, uh, board meeting uh, in support of something that was going on down, and they have this system. And there's basically, like Jamie said, sits on a table. Whoever talks, it's on you. No microphones. It's a very impressive system. It brings us into the future. I'm personally in favor of it.
Mr. Fritchie is Mr. Technology. What is happening in our world, man?
Now if we, now if we just get some tables, we can. We can put it on a nice table, right? Right, Jamie?
So it's one person.
I am not, you guys decide the table.
Okay, so it's one person speaking at a time and it captures the person. So you got multiple conversations going back there. It's not gonna know exactly where to go, but people will learn how to deal with that.
Well, so there's two microphone wires, similar to, um, an old school conference room where you would have, uh, something in the center and then wires out with the microphones on the side to catch everyone at a conference room table. We will have that option to add those, but those would be in front of the board and in front of the people that day. So it makes it, makes the owl smarter to know exactly where to go.
And probably learns as it goes. So great for the conference room and I could see uses. Um, how do we use it in the courthouse? Are we still using the current system in the courthouse?
It would be the exact same thing.
A second system.
Uh, establish it, work through any, you know, kinks and, and do it here first for the town and, because this would be for the town too. Um, town and a village. And then, you know, as long as it's, you know, everybody's happy with it, then we can move it, uh, then we can, um, implement it into the courthouse and we'll talk to the.
Is Tarrytown using it only in a boardroom or are they also using it in a bigger space?
We're the only ones who broadcast from two different places, where everybody else uses one room.
I didn't know that, actually.
Yeah, we're, we're unique in many ways.
To go, actually, because I went to the Peak School one. They said, what are you talking about? It's always in this room.
Yeah, that, we're the only ones who have this rotating schedule thing.
So then comes my next question. So this is great. Yay. Do you have any more questions about this? Okay, my continuation is the community center as far as using this technology, uh, for meetings, for a public meeting, like we talked with Prac, maybe there's seventy people in the meeting.
Interesting you ask. Yesterday, we had a meeting with, um, uh, we want to make sure that everything we're doing in the community center is, as, that's a separate building is, but as far as systems go, we want to treat everything we own as one building. Um, so we had a meeting yesterday with our, um, with East Coast, like our electric, you know, like the, the people who do all our wiring, as well as the people who do our security systems, our AT, IT people, um, Um, and we talked about all the integration and it came up about audio visual capacity. So I think it is absolutely something that we can look at. Um, one of the things that we talked about is being able to use the, being able to use the, um, the gym more as an auditorium, because we've never really been able to do that as successfully as we'd like to. Um, so, you know, having larger screen TVs and better sound systems, better audio visuals. So we actually are going to, I think this might be an element of it, but I think that's probably a bigger issue when we're talking about rooms that require some acoustical, uh, improvements probably or some modifications that we'll need to make. But that is something that we're looking at, um, and the idea would be like if we had a very large meeting, um, or for the inauguration.
For twenty-eight on that or, you know, we could do a year of this.
What we're going to do is make sure that everything, like all the conduits are in place, everything that we would need to do, any of that, that we're anticipating those needs to the best, to the degree possible as we do the renovation. So that's actually something we're going to be looking at specifically is AV capacity at the.
Okay, so I can't believe we've still called it AV, audio visual. I love that, like when I was.
I don't know, I'm old school, so that's.
Like when I was a little kid, so I just want to understand, we will not be sue anymore in cable? Any, anything, right? That's out?
Correct.
Okay, the, we're moving to this, we're going to take some of this stuff out. We're going to be talking about Zoom. If we have to go to Teams, we're able to do that or any other platform. We're starting here, we're moving to the courthouse and then maybe a year from it, whatever, we're going to test, we're going to see what goes on. It works before we throw everything out, just to make sure everything works and we might move it to other places. That's my understanding. This is all in the budget that we approved?
Yes.
Right, this was budgeted for in the budget.
Yes, and it's peg money too.
Okay, sir.
Thank you. Um, so to start, I'm, I'm curious about what is the, um, what does the operation look like? So I know that it automatically, uh, I've used, uh, the device before. In this particular situation, we have that kind of switchboard, um, situation where there's a person actually choosing. Do you still have that kind of manual override or that, that manual piece?
We no longer will need that.
I'm going to let Jamie answer the more detailed questions, but.
Yeah, that, that's the owl, uh, it's through AI, AI technology. It actually, when it recognizes voices, it, it goes, uh, it, the owl will turn its eye towards whomever is speaking. So, um, but with those microphones that I was mentioning, that you'll have the, the extra ones in the room, it would be towards you, so it would have a priority towards the direction where the board is sitting.
It can also do a split screen, right, Jamie? When we saw in Pleasantville, so for example, someone is at the podium, speaking to someone at the dais, you would see a split screen on this monitor here. You would see one person here and one person.
We would have to learn how to do that, but yes.
We have faith.
Yeah. Um, yeah, uh, what is the, um, because right now we're broadcasting to the internet, but there's also a local TV component. How does all of that work?
So we would still be going out live on Zoom. But we would be, um, and Jamie, if I'm misstating anything, please correct me, but, um, we would still download to, uh, YouTube and, um, and to, um,
To the cable channel.
To the cable channel, I'm sorry.
So, so that's, so what we do is we take the Zoom recording and GoTV uploads it and does programming like you would see on any channel. So we choose what time, uh, everything will be on the channel. It's similar to that where right now, where I believe we're live on the channel, uh, we will no longer be going out live. Most of the local municipalities in this area aren't live anymore, uh, because their equipment had a base of, end of life. So they can't go out live anymore.
So, yeah, part of this is out of necessity and, you know, part of it is moving into the, the, the future here or the present. Um, but there are still things that we're going to need to do, um, that would, would likely require GoTV and, and support, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. This is a move forward. Um, huh? Pat, oh, okay, that's a thumbs up. I'm sorry, I should have seen that. Are you in favor?
Uh, generally speaking, I'm in favor. I think the two hesitations that I have are one, I mean, we have a video guy that I love. I've featured him, like I love this guy and so.
We, we do love.
You know, I, uh, that's certainly a, a part of the equation for me. The second is, uh, in my use of owl technology in the past, and it could be that this is, you know, there are different models of, of owls. Um, the way that I have seen it is that, so there isn't actually a physical device that is turning. An owl's head actually physically turns, because they can't move their eyeballs. They have to physically move their head. This thing is actually a panoramic three sixty video that the AI kind of takes a slice of. Um, and that's how it is able to kind of capture all these things all at once. And what kind of happens sometimes is that there's a, like, these folks are talking in the back and so it, it, it starts capturing them and that, you know, there's like a, a lot of bouncing, right? That's why I was asking about kind of the manual override to say like, okay, if we're talking, but then these folks are chit-chatting in the back, that they can kind of ignore them and uh, I'm less convinced that like the AI will learn, only because I've seen it like not necessarily do that. And it would be more, uh, uh, comfortable for me if, if there was a way to control it somehow, but that's the only.
Sue, I, I think there's a couple of things here. Um, you know, my understanding is that, um, the owl has evolved, um, in terms of not only, you know, Bob, Bob's in Tarrytown, but Pleasantville uses it and Maddie and Jamie were able to go there. Um, we did hear concerns about earlier iterations of the owl based on kind of the same thing, like it's just not perfect. I also think like there's, we may decide that we, we, you know, we may decide we want to do different things in the future. Um, the reality is we have to upgrade, like the convoluted system that we have to go through right now to get online. It's okay when Jesse and Jamie are here, but if we have a meeting and I have to, like, it's just too much. And, and it, it, you got everything, you know, the, the.
The people.
You know, and, and it's definitely a problem like when we, like, when we do the youth bureau hybrid meetings, it's very challenging. This would allow us more flexibility for the, for our land use meetings where, you know, sometimes I think the board meetings are, are probably the most intense in terms of the need for, for video, um, coverage, less so for some of our other meetings. And just to do the land use meetings, the amount of staff time that's required just to get the meeting up and running isn't really, it's just not practical. So what, the other thing too, this would allow us to move our land use board meetings here, um, which is a big deal, because right now, as you know, they're, they're literally like in the town of Osning. Uh, they're not even in the village and because they're not walkable, it, it has been in, we do have some people don't drive who, who are on our land use board. So having it here for so many reasons makes more sense. But it also makes more sense because there's so many times we want to be able to have a hybrid meeting or do something, you know, a little bit more, uh, you know, where we're using the stream, where we don't have to have, you know, experts in to turn on the computers for us because it just becomes too complicated. Um, so that's a large part of it too. So, um, it may be, you know, I think it's the type of thing that it, it still makes a lot of sense for us for our broader use. So, but if we use it and decide, hey, this isn't really like what we want for the boardroom, there are, uh, for board meetings, there are other things we can do. And I have been talking, Jamie and I had a conversation with actually the guy that you introduced me to, like, there are people who are starting, um, the array of people who work in, uh, IT and audio visual who work for in the public sector is growing a little bit, um, and that wasn't the case previously. So I think we'd be able to evolve, but this way we would have much greater flexibility. Jamie, am I missing anything?
No, you, you covered everything.
You know, and, and again, when you have, there is a limit to what AI can do versus what, when you have very talented individuals to do. And we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater here too. So if we have opportunities and, and that require, you know, a more sophisticated human touch, we want to make sure we have those opportunities as well.
Okay, thank you. Next.
All right, um, next up is, uh, a hosting agreement with FBS and, uh, that is our, um, uh, parking people, um, and I'll turn that over to Maddie and Stuart and then we have, well, we will round out the evening with some cabaret license applications.
Um, I, I can, I can begin, um, obviously with, with contract, Stuart is, is the brain behind the operation. Um, but just as a refresher, FBS is our parking enforcement, uh, vendor who we've used for several years and are very, very happy with. Um, you heard it, uh, from Clerk Donnelly herself and, and that is an impressive endorsement. Um, she's very happy with FBS. Um, what FBS has been helping us with over the past year or so is building, um, a database that is able to be used so that users can process their own municipal and commuter parking permits. Um, we've been all online for a while, but the way that it was working was that we would take a paper application and then we would have to manually enter or we'd have to send it to them to do that. Um, this is a lot more seamless. And the best thing about it is because we were sort of the, the guinea pig, we got to design it exactly, exactly the way that we wanted to see it. Um, so Sue definitely had her druthers and, and how exactly this has rolled out and she's been very happy. Um, so because of that, because we were sort of the, the test kitchen, um, they told us for the first year it would be gratis until we got all the kinks, um, you know, straightened out. Um, but now they would like to enter into a contract with us, which we think is only fair. Um, it accounts for a very small portion. I think we did the calculations, like less than three percent of, of our commuter and municipal permit sales. Um, so I believe it's nine thousand dollars a year, uh, starting in January first. Um, this would also run concurrent, I don't remember exactly what we decided about dates, but the other agreement that we have with FBS, which also includes the town of Osning, because it includes the court, um, the court's parking system. Um, we are hoping to get it so that they both.
That, that one, that one ends on March thirty-one, so the plan would be that that one, when it's renewed, would go to December thirty-one, twenty-six, and then they would work in, uh.
Um, and then just the, the last detail that I'll give, um, is that, you know, we basically, you know, the, the team at FBS is, is very lovely and we have a very nice rapport with them and we sort of said, look, uh, you know, like this, this is something that obviously we budgeted for and we talked about this in, in budgets. But, you know, nine thousand dollars is not an insignificant amount to, to our community. Um, how can you sort of add some value to this proposition? Um, and they said, well, funny you asked, we are going to work with the clerk's office on the overnight hardship parking, um, portal, um, this coming spring. So basically, hopefully, once it's, once it's all straightened out, it will look exactly the same. Where if you need to park overnight in your neighborhood, you can buy an annual permit online or I'm getting my driveway repaid. I just need one night. I can go in and so ABC one, two, three, don't take out my car, um, and then you would be in the system for when the overnight hardship parking person passes by it. Um, so we know that this is going to be a, a, a real mountain, but I think getting them to commit to coupling that with the introduction, the introduction of this fee, um, is, is a way to make sure that we're getting every bit of value out of this contract. Um, so Stuart, I'm not sure if you have anything else.
No, I think you got it all.
Pat, any questions? Um, did you want to say something? I saw you moving. Okay. Folks, I'm good with this.
That's ominous. Okay.
I'll wait. Waiting.
Okey doke. Thank you. We'll have a resolution next week.
Okay, next.
All right, um, cabaret licenses are up next.
Well, we have Captain, uh, Donnie, you're joining us. And as, uh, Liza Minnelli said, life is a cabaret, so we might as well get started.
Nobody's sitting alone in their room tonight, so.
What good is sitting, as you just said. Let's, let's go first. We're going to go one after the other. Uh, Captain will do, first is, uh, the boathouse. Uh, they, uh, are seeking a, uh, twenty twenty-six cabaret license. Uh, a few things to note, just in terms of general with regard to all the cabaret licenses that are being applied for. Uh, if the license, if the SLA, meaning State Liquor Authority License expires in twenty twenty-six, the expiration date for the cabaret license as well as the refreshment license will be the expiration of the SLA date. There will be a provision in the license, a condition that will say, prior to the expiration date, you must provide the clerk with your new license. Uh, if you don't, your license has become void. Uh, we are also requiring of all licensees, which we've required of other licensees before, that no volume discount sales of alcohol and that the licensee will provide to the licensed officer, which is the clerk and the corporation counsel, documents confirming that all the employees, uh, have successfully completed the, uh, uh, New York State Liquor Authority Alcohol Training Awareness Program, which is that ATAP program. If you remember, we required that at other places, yes, Rusty.
Just to understand, so if their SLA license sunsets in June, this permit, the cabaret will sunset in June, is it a, do they have to reapply?
No.
Just be, once you get the approval from SLA, it'll just carry over?
Yes, once it would, then, what would happen is assume it's a June thirtieth. If brought before June thirtieth, we get, uh, the clerk gets something that says now it's going to be July of twenty twenty-seven, we would then reissue the license with a December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six end date. They would not have to reapply. But, uh, as I said, all of them will have the, uh, the, those requirements with regard to the ATAP certification. They keep the certification current and that there's no volume discount. That was something that we put in last year with regard to a number of, of the locations. Turning specifically to Up the River Restaurant, the boathouse, they have an SLA license that expires, they have two actually, that expire on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Uh, they are looking for, as I look at it right here, uh, they're looking for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, Thursday and Friday would be, well, Thursday would be five to eleven, Friday would be five to midnight. Saturday would be two to midnight, Sunday would be one to eleven PM. Uh, and it would be live music and bands up to, uh, you know, eight performers. And, uh, Captain, I didn't know if you had anything to add with regard to this application.
No, other than that, I'm disappointed that I didn't have Eliza Minnelli reference on my, uh, Philly Board Meeting bingo card. But, uh, no, not, nothing about this establishment.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board on this one?
Questions? Is it a thumbs up? Thumbs up?
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Grace Hall. Uh, Grace Hall's SLA license expires on March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So again, they will have the same provision with regard to expiration dates. And, uh, they are requesting, uh, Monday through Sunday, basically seven days a week, uh, midnight to eleven PM. And it would be banned up to five members.
Seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what they had last time?
Uh, let me look, I can tell you that now. No, noon, I apologize.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yes, Mayor, it was the same last year. It's at seven Old Albany Post Road.
But they do a lot of, oh, the old Eagles.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
And Captain, I don't think there were any comments with regard to this one.
Not a one negative comment, no.
Okay.
Things good?
So that's.
Thumbs up on this one as well?
Thank you, folks. Okay, next is Karma Lounge. Uh, their SLA license does not expire until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, so that does not apply. They are missing one document, which they are aware of. Uh, we are now requiring that the, uh, businesses provide a document which indicates that there's been no change in their method of operation. That's a document that they file with the State Liquor Authority. Uh, Mr. Martinez, uh, sent me a note on Saturday that I would have that note. As of today, the clerk's office has not received it, so we will follow up. He will not get his license until he, we in fact get that document. Uh, with regard to Karma, let me get that for you here. They are looking for, first of all, they're looking for an eleven AM start time. That is one hour earlier than we permit under our code. Uh, they're looking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eleven AM to eleven PM. Thursday through Sunday, eleven AM to three AM. Uh, one, we don't go to three AM, uh, and we've also done for Saturdays. It's basically midnight is the latest we've done or one AM on Friday and Saturdays. Uh, la, the last time they did this, uh, last, the, the last year, they were Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, noon to eleven, Thursday, Sunday, noon to midnight and Friday, Saturday, noon to one AM. So, uh, that was last year's. That's right, that was, and that was what was granted last year, so.
Um, I'm going to go thumbs up with what we did last year and keep it consistent. Does anybody want to change anything? You're good.
The, oh, trustee White, you had some questions about the police reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do the police.
Trustee White's.
Can Captain Donnie tell us about, um, the police activity?
Uh, in regard to Karma or in general, you, you wanted me to cover the previous?
Karma.
Uh, yeah, it's been, uh, certainly, uh, better than, I'm, I'm sure that most of the board who is aware of, uh, the investigations that have gone on in the past and over the last three years, in fact, um, we are certainly in a much better position and, and much better, better poised to handle these issues. Uh, Karma has been much more in compliance. Um, in fact, um, you know, they're sort of last man standing in, in terms of, of, um, a lot of the problem areas that we used to have. Um, we are, uh, investigating some potential, uh, overages in terms of their, their, uh, cabaret hours. So, uh, you know, we would advise, uh, keeping in line with what's been done in the past and, and no additional extension.
So, your thumbs up? So, the best part of that, and we said this in the past, when people show improvement, we're going to go. If the captain comes back at some point, I don't think you have to wait till they come back for their license.
Of course.
Excuse me, if we are made aware that in fact, it's been slipping back to some bad habits, we want to repair those bad habits because sometimes mistakes are made. But otherwise, um, I think we're good. Yeah.
Okay, next is Austining Elks. Uh, their license expires on, uh, April 30th of 2026. Uh, and they are requesting, they're requesting Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, each night starting at 6:00 PM. Thursday and Sunday ending at 10:00 PM, Friday and Saturday ending at 11:00 PM. That is a slight difference from last time where they were only asking for Thursday, Friday and Saturday, and those would have been from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, or, and Friday and Saturday to 11:00 PM. So the closing time is the same, but they are asking for one more day, which would now be, uh, Sunday, from 6:00 to 10:00.
And what's their operation?
Uh, uh, live band DJ and karaoke.
Indoor?
Yes.
Right, because we raised, I raised the question about the parking lot.
Right, right. But that, this is all, this is all strictly indoor.
Okay, thank you.
And Captain, I don't think there was anything with regard to, uh, Elks.
No news is good news.
Uh, anything from the board, other than what she asked?
I think I'm sure they just want to run more events. Not, not that I know. Does anybody have an issue or was this a thumbs up? The hours are way within what we normally would approve.
Okay, thank you.
It's got a thumbs up.
Next, next is Sing Sing Hill Brewery. Uh, their license expires on February 28th of 2026. So again, we will have that language within it. Uh, they are asking for, uh, Monday through Sunday, so seven days a week, uh, noon to midnight. And just to compare, last year, uh, it was Sunday through Thursday, noon to midnight and Friday and Saturday, noon to 1:00 AM. So they're basically cutting back one hour on Friday and Saturday nights.
Adding a date?
Uh, no, uh, Sunday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday. So it would have been, it would still be the whole week, but it's just one, but a few hours.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Sunday, Thursday was 11:00 PM cutoff?
No, it was mid, it was either midnight or 1:00 AM.
Okay.
We give others.
Right, we've done others. So, okay, we do, so.
They're within the box.
They're within the box. Okay, and, uh, nothing from them either, Cap?
Nothing to contribute, nope.
Okay.
Thumbs up from Pat. Is everybody a thumbs up on this? Yes?
Next is our newest application, uh, which is, uh, Caribe Sports Bar. Uh, and they are going to be taking over, which was Atlantic Bar down at 84 Croton Avenue, next to Tiaris Tropicalis. Uh, their SLA license expires on February 8th of 2026. So again, they will have the language in there, uh, with regard to, you know, expirations. They are looking for, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. 2:00 AM is later than you folks have done, uh, so Thursday, Thursday could be, what you've done in the past would be till midnight. Uh, Saturday, uh, Friday and Saturday could be till 1:00 AM and Sunday could be till midnight, whatever you folks want to do. Their method of operation would be DJs dancing, uh, and karaoke. Uh, and, uh, Sergeant, Captain rather, I know this is a new one, so any comments you have for the board would be helpful.
Yeah, first I'd just like to say what an incredible partner, uh, Mr. Kahane and the clerk's office have been, uh, with the police department in terms of, uh, helping to, uh, rein in some of our late night issues. Um, it's not only been an issue for the community, but, uh, an issue for officer safety for a number of years. And they've been incredible partners in, in, uh, helping us to, uh, help these businesses better comply with, uh, best practices and, and what's best for the community. Um, in terms of this, uh, specific location, I would say that I think it's worth mentioning that, um, this location, um, it, it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kahane, but, um, were they starting as a brand new business, they would not be eligible for a license to sell hard liquor. They would be eligible only for a beer, wine and cider license.
You're correct. They effectively get, if you want to use the phrase grandfathered in, because of when Atlantic's license terminated, there was not a one-year gap between that and the new application and under State Liquor Authority, uh, regulations. Because of that, they can basically piggyback on what was, uh, the, uh, the Atlantic Bars, uh, application, which meant that they cannot, they can sell in addition to beer and wine, they can also sell liquor.
This is a new owner, new owner or same owner, new name?
Uh, no, new owner. In fact, this, this license, uh, and, and their refreshment license specifically provide that the former owner and any of the people who are identified on that owner's application may have no ownership interest or any management interest in that particular location.
Okay.
And certainly if I thought that this, um, that there was any evidence that that were the case, that it was connected with the old business, I would be raising more alarm. I mentioned this more as a, a, a context or, uh, food for thought for the board. Um, but, uh, the reason that this is pertinent is that if that bar were opening as a brand new location and not sort of getting in there a, a bit, uh, under a loophole or, uh, subject to a loophole, um, they would not be allowed to have that, that liquor license there because they are within 200 feet of a house of worship, being the, the church directly across the street. New York State Liquor Authority has a 200-foot rule where a establishment may not be given a new liquor license if they're within 200 feet of a house of worship or a school. Um, so, uh, again, I, I offer this only, uh, really as context and food for thought that, um, the, uh, you know, the board certainly isn't beholden to the liquor authority's rules and can make decisions however they wish. Um, that said, if this location were opening tomorrow as a brand new business, they would not be allowed to have that liquor license. And, um, uh, you know, I would offer that, um, maybe some consideration should be made in terms of cabaret, that perhaps it should be considered a little bit more deeply, um, for the same reason that liquor licenses are not provided, uh, within 200 feet of a school or a church, uh, because there is that potential for vice activity in the areas of, uh, childhood education and worship. Um, so I only offer that again as just some, uh, some context and some additional information.
And as the captain knows, we took this matter up, all the way up in the SLA to their senior counsel, who basically said, the way our regs are now, they, they will basically can use what Atlantic Bar did. So, uh, we, we made the argument because I will say this, the applicant in his application to the SLA acknowledged there were three houses of worship in that 81 Croton Avenue location. So he made it very clear, but, uh, we, we tried that issue with the SLA, uh, because when we first saw the temporary license issued, which was for all retail, we inquired about that and they said, no, he's, he's basically allowed to do that. So that's with regard to Caribe. Uh, are there any questions from the board with regard to this license?
Are there, is there a building board? Um, is this the one that has a plywood as a wall?
That's, I believe, Tiaris, which I think is next door, which they have in their window, I believe is, I believe that's, that's our, that's our next application.
Okay, because, uh, that thing was put up, I think temporarily, and now they painted it black and it's become a wall.
That I'm not sure. I know that one of the things.
I brought this up to you, Stuart, a number of months ago.
That may be, that I don't.
It's been more than a year. It's a, it's, they painted it black and they've got a banner on it. I just, it, it, next to the others, I don't know.
It's, it's, it looks like from the picture I'm looking at, Mayor, it's, it's the next door store, Tiaris Tropicalis. Uh, with regard to, well, first of all, with regard to Caribe, uh, is the board in, uh, agreement that for, uh, Thursday and, uh, Sunday, it would be a midnight closing and it would be a 1:00 AM on Friday and Saturday? Or, uh, because of the location, do you, you can, whatever chart times you want to do, of course, rest with you.
Yeah.
That's what, what you've done, that's what you've done, uh, in the past, yes. Okay. Uh, with regard to this particular application I had sent to the board earlier today, they're also looking to put an awning up because the current awning says Atlantic Bar. Uh, so the awning, which I sent around, this is what it would look like. Uh, it comes to the board because since it's an awning, it's above the sidewalk, the board has to approve that they can do that. So I, I sent, I give, you know, send that around to you folks, uh, if there is any objection, because we could have a resolution next week, uh, in addition to the cabaret, you know, uh, authorizing the placement of the, uh, of the awning. By the way, the, uh, the Series 031 Sports Bar, that's their DBA. So that's why that appears in the awning, not Caribe Sports Bar. That's the formal corporate name.
Is there a variance required for that because it's older village property?
Is there a, what I didn't?
A variance?
No, there's no variance required, but it's just, it has, it requires Board of Trustees approval.
Okay.
That, the, I mean, to me, the, the awning was similar enough to the previous one that had been approved that I, I didn't really have any issues with it, as long as it didn't come out any further.
So, um, I don't know, we trade the board. Uh, for me, and I rarely do this, I am amazingly uncomfortable having, um, something new open up under new ownership. My feeling is either I would do like a six months to see how they're doing and do a trial run so that we keep our eyes open. I'm really uncomfortable with, like, there's like two bars, right? Isn't the one next to it also?
Yeah, that their application is.
Right, so there are two bars. The one was already there, the other one is not the same owner. It's, as you had argued, I would go with your argument. Um, I'm like totally uncomfortable in having yet another bar open, um, across from, um, school and, you know, the after-school program and all the other stuff that's going on. And there's this like another bar right next to it. Um, just not sure we need such a density of bars in this area. And I'm not sure what the legality is or not, or they've already bought the place, so, you know, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable.
I'll say, I'll say this, if you deny the cabaret, you, he would still be eligible for a refreshment license. Uh, and he does have an SLA license.
Right.
So the real question is, do you want to cabaret there or not as, as a, as, as a business at that location? I will make another point, this license expires on February 8th. What you could do, and I think the board has actually done this in the past, is rather than providing us with a new license that goes to, you know, let's say goes into 2027, what you could do is that, uh, you know, this, if he shows us that he has a renewed license, you, you sunset it on May 31st or June 30th. And before that time, uh, and we, we've put this into other, uh, conditions that they have to communicate with Captain Donnie, Lieutenant McGovern, as to, you know, how their, what their operations are. And they can report back to the board and the board can in June, let's say, come back and say, okay, we'll now extend you for the next, till the end of the year or something like that, if you're comfortable with that. You can also obviously just deny the cabaret if you, you want to do that as well, but.
It could be a bar.
It will still be a bar.
Right. Sorry?
Yeah, we don't do it. I, I, I'm a favor of doing the six month.
Okay.
Especially since it's a new owner.
Right.
And, you know, who knows? And then we could always get together with the captain or run reports and see what we got.
I can just say this, and I know it's a new owner, so he has been exceptionally responsive, uh, to getting us what we want. The full, you know, method of operation, you know, all the, all the, all the documentation. But again, I think doing it, as you've said, to, uh, basically go to like, you know, let's say June 1st or whatever, once we get the, uh, you know, the extension, I think we're fine. Frankly, as I said before, if for some reason we don't get the extended license, the license terminates anyway.
Okay.
So, again, just my feelings is, um, I'm gonna, I probably would feel better about six months rather than saying no cabaret, because give them a shot, you know, but I want to keep this really tight, um, and see what happens. Um, because it's new and bar businesses historically have been problematic, so I'm gonna, that would be my vote. Are you doing six months too? Which way are you going? Six months? Is that Pat?
Six.
Okay.
And, and.
And we count on the.
The awning permit is okay?
Well, I think so. I mean, it might make the place look better, actually, I think, like, because it's just a brick with like a bunch of squares, maybe it'll bridge others. So we count obviously on the police to keep us on top of whatever's happening there.
Uh, next is, uh, Tiaris Tropicalis, which is next door to Caribe, so it also has an 84 Croton Avenue address. Uh, it, that license expires August 31st of 2027. So again, that particular, uh, language that we put in there would not be needed. Last year, uh, they, their license was for Friday and Saturday only, 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Uh, basically, they're asking for the same thing this year, at 9:00 to 1:00. Uh, they were the first, uh, establishment where we put in the requirements for, uh, that you had to have the training, you had to have the certification, and they've, you know, complied with everything up to this point. So that's, that's Tiaris.
Um, you know, this, this location, just to remind the board, is the same street address as what was the Atlantic Bar before. Um, it was a real bear to, to bifurcate the calls for service between what we ended up calling 84A and 84B Croton Avenue. But since the closing of Atlantic, um, it really seems as though the calls for service, the disturbances, the altercations, um, have really, uh, died down to practically nil. So it appears that the, the problem location was the one that closed, so, uh, we have no further on that.
Well, that's, sounds promising. Sounds good. Um, that wall with the banner, and we're not supposed to allow people to have banners, right? You can see it in the picture. It's stapled onto the, um, this thing. That's them, right?
No, that would be them, correct.
Right. Can we get that fixed before we?
We can certainly bring that to the building department's attention, yes.
Okay, let's get that fixed because it's basically plywood with some stuff around it. Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Is everybody good? Okay.
Next, we have Richie's Kitchen. Uh, Richie's Kitchen's SLA license expires on December 31st of 2027. So there is no issue. They actually just got it renewed by the SLA. Uh, the last time they were before the board, they, uh, were granted Tuesday through Saturday, uh, noon to 10:00 PM, and, uh, they are asking basically for the same time.
Captain, anything?
No negative interactions whatsoever.
Okay, is that a thumbs up, everyone?
Yeah.
And last is Three Westerly. Uh, their license expires on January 31st of 2027. Uh, when Three Westerly was last before the board, uh, they were granted Sunday through Thursday, noon to midnight, Friday and Saturday, uh, noon to 1:00 AM. And in this year's application, uh, they're asking for 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday, but the board has basically done 1:00 AM. Otherwise, it's the same, uh, application. Uh, I'm pleased to report that there was an overdue water bill that has been paid. There was an overdue penalty for the water bill that has been paid. So, uh, they are good to go and then cleared by finance, as well as the other departments.
And Captain?
Yeah, they have not, not, not been a problem location. They've been fine.
That's all we have for this one. As I did mention to the board, VIP Sports Bar, which is next door to us at 12 Croton, uh, their liquor license actually expires today. Uh, they have been sold. Uh, the new owner is apparently coming in tomorrow to meet our deputy clerk, our clerk slash license officer. And, uh, but they have been told that they will need to submit an entirely new application and they're going to have to get an SLA license. So basically, as relates to VIP, uh, they will be on ice until we hear anything further from them.
And I think we've basically set up a pretty good process of who the owners are, making sure everything's paid off and, you know, all the other. and, you know, all the other relationships of relatives buying and all of that stuff. I think we're like in a good place where we have a system. So I think that's.
We'll say also, I mean, that's credit to, I know that the captain already mentioned it, but to the clerk, to Stuart, and to the captain and and his team. It is, the spreadsheet has has grown so much since it started. I know we have another meeting tomorrow. There are still a couple of people that that were waiting for different components, so there will be more. But congratulations, it really has come together very nicely.
And kudos as well to to Matty, as well as the Building Department and their participation. It is a a team and very holistic.
Team effort.
It's not an easy thing to accomplish.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to adjourn for exec? Nope. We're good. Don't need anybody else, just us. Pat, I'm gonna just put my phone on and you could call us.
Okay.
Good night.
Night.
Well, we don't need the mics. I'm sorry. Move to your. Motion to adjourn. Aye. Good night.